All right. Call to order, the February 5th, 2019, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. We are going to start with 350 Great Pond Road. Christopher Burt and Ellen Goodwin, application for watershed special permit under sections 195-4.17 and 195-10.7, the North Andover zoning bylaw. Monica, is our hearing still open?
It is.
Okay. We do have a draft, so why don't we review the draft if there are any question, decision? Anything else you want to add?
Nothing.
Perfect. Why don't we review the draft decision? I will say that I told Monica, special condition 21 currently reads vista pruning, and it gives a definition, is not strictly prohibited. That was, I believe that was not our intention. Our intention was to make vista pruning prohibited, so I've asked her to change that to say vista pruning is prohibited unless given further approval by the planning board. So there may be a situation where it becomes appropriate, but I'd like to come back if we're going to do any vista pruning. Okay? So we'll review the rest of the draft. If we have any questions or comments, we'll discuss them, and then we'll close the hearing.
And I do want to call out too, as for the last meeting, in terms of replacement ratio, it's not one to one, it'll be replaced to one to one and a half. And all plantings within the non-disturbance area are of native species, and I've had that confirmed with conservation.
Where is the one to one and a half?
Number 10.
So what's the one and what's the one and a half? What's the trees that were cut down and what's the new trees?
It's if you look at conditions 15 and 16. 16 gives you what is scheduled, so you can surmise from that what the one is.
I think the numbers are off a little bit. Page nine, page one ends with number nine, and then it starts on, I'm sorry, page three ends with number nine and starts at eight.
All right, I'll correct any numbering. So number 21 as well as the numbering will be. And I'll also cast the revised plan as well, so you can see what's being re-planted.
Anyone else have further?
No comments.
Comments, questions? Correct?
Just a question for the applicant. This does specify the type of fertilizers that are restricted. Are you aware of those? Thanks.
Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this application for a special permit, watershed special permit? Excellent. No? Can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the application for a watershed special permit for 350 Great Pond Road.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And, okay, so can we get a motion to approve? I'm sorry. A motion to approve the watershed special permit as amended, which include the amendments to what is currently labeled condition 21, special condition 21, as well as the renumbering of the document.
Give it to Lori.
Lori, do you want to make that motion? Motion to approve?
Aye.
All right, Lori makes the motion to approve?
I'll second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Approved. Four to oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to thank Monica?
Yes, we always thank Monica.
I believe they did hard work, all right?
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, guys.
All right, you're welcome. Okay, why don't we move on to 495 Main Street, Town of North Andover, application for a special permit, site plan review under sections 195-8.10 through 8.17 and 195-10.7 of the Town of North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes to construct a recreational complex, including athletic fields, tennis courts, picnic areas, and associated parking areas, walkways, and emergency maintenance access paths. It's in an R4. Gentlemen?
How are you?
Good. Thank you for coming once again.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Monica, why don't you give us an update as to what new information has been provided in our packet? Then we will have the gentlemen present anything that they wish to present. I know Mr. Mailer's here. If there's anything he wants to present, or whether he just wants questions, we can go to that next. And then we'll go to comments from the town and questions.
Great. So the hearing was opened at the last meeting. We've received some revised site plans, which were in your packet. We've also received our first responses from our peer review consultant. And some things I want to point out from there is that they've included some low-impact design in the plan, which consists of tree boxes. The peer reviewer in the first review stated that the analysis stopped at the limit of work or property boundary. This analysis has been expanded. Let me see. DBW and Conservation have received copies of the responses, but again, they came late, so they haven't had a chance to review them. So we're still waiting for any response from the applicant, and then clearance from the peer review consultant. We also received a review from the Health Department. He included a statement on the components and matter used on the turf fields. That statement was included in your packet. He also stated that the proposed concession stand should go through peer plan review sooner rather than later. So he's going to want to get a review of the design plan, scope of operation, material finishes, and again, all of that should be approved or determined as soon as possible. Also, we're waiting for, police, they're waiting for information on the camera system. They said they haven't had a chance to review what's going to be the system on site, so that's still outstanding.
Okay. If the, just on that, if the police feel it's appropriate to comment, you know, just in writing to us about that, great. If there's any security benefit to not doing so, and that's something that might be better in executive session, let us know. If by telling us all about the security, that defeats some of the purpose of the security, just let us know. I don't know whether that's the case or not, but just if that's a concern.
Okay.
Okay, and I did notice that the Board of Health did say that if it, for the athletic field, for turf, that to, you know, certain lead levels should be looked at and made sure that they are below certain levels. Okay. Gentlemen, why don't you tell us from your perspective where things have changed, or feedback from the last meeting?
Sure. Just one point of clarification to what Monica had mentioned. I think we have given the town all the information in terms of responses to technical comments, and we're now waiting for the peer reviewer to get back to us on our responses to their latest comments. So the ball's in their court. We've supplied everything that we need to supply at this point.
Right, and so we did see the waterfield design group's comments with your responses to those. And I saw that a lot of the items that they had mentioned have now been incorporated into revised plans, and some explanations were provided about why there's a difference, and we wanted to hear back from them about what they feel about those differences.
Right. And our expectation is that we're very close on how we're both looking at the project, and so I don't expect a lot of further depth or, you know, progression deeper into the weeds on this. I think we're tracking in the opposite direction, where we should be able to resolve things between them and us relatively soon and easily.
Fantastic.
One thing I want to add, Conservation still needs to hear this, so they may have some additional comments as well.
Okay.
That's right. So from our last meeting, we came here and received input from your board as well as from the public, and that was our opportunity to hear people's concerns, and we said that we'd come back with answers and statements on how we were going to address those matters. So what I'd like to do, if it's okay, is go through the list of items that we received from last time in terms of commentary, and explain how we're planning to address those.
Fantastic.
So I think, I don't control the slides, but if we could move, we've kind of queued these up in sequence for how we're going to respond. So this is simply existing conditions for point of reference, in case we need to come back and talk about this, this is the site.
All right, so back to where we are today?
Yeah. All right, and this is the proposed plan. Again, for point of reference, no comment here, but if we need to come back to it, this is our.
And no changes to this, right?
Correct.
Okay, great.
So one of the comments we received at the last meeting was about screening to the neighborhood that's in this area that's circled, and the specific resident who stood up and spoke was concerned about how the existing chain-link fence has done a great job because vegetation has kind of grown through it, and that serves as a very thick or very strong visual buffer to what's there now, but acknowledging also that that fence was in poor and sad shape and needed to be replaced. So what we've done here is circled that area, and on the next slide, we want to highlight how we're addressing the screening issues. And this was part of our original plan, but we're just specifically discussing it and addressing it. So the jagged line to the top is the proposed fence line against those neighbors. The dark green circles are larger trees, and then what's hard to see is right up against the fence are a series of shrubs as well. And so what we're doing is armoring that entire fence line as we replace the fence with a series of low-height and then moderate-height new plantings. And I don't have the specific height, but.
The arborvitae's are actually, will start off about eight feet, but can actually grow up to 40 feet, and those are the ones right along the fence. And then the other ones are the evergreens as well, that will start off at about 10 to 12 feet, and then grow, so grow up to about 40 feet.
So you notice the spread on those circles, that's the width, diameter of those proposed trees, and of course, the arborvitae's are meant to be, to grow together and be tall. So we've chosen all evergreens so that throughout the entire year, there's screening there, and as they grow, they're pretty healthy-sized specimens as we're buying them right out of the gate for the project. As they grow, things will only get better. Yes?
So it looks like the arborvitae's are only on two locations where the fence is, corners of the fence.
Right.
Is there, what's the thinking of having the arborvitae's just in those two locations as opposed to along a further stretch of the fence?
Well, what happens when you line them up, as you're saying, along the entire line of the fence, it becomes, what we like to try to do is provide variety.
Yep.
And so what we're doing with the placement of the larger circled trees is we're eliminating sightlines through different placements. So the arborvitae's are providing a specific green barrier, and then the larger trees are filling in the gaps. The other thing that we think is helpful is that it not be completely opaque or completely unable to see through. We think there's a little bit of value to be able to occasionally see through it. And again, as things grow, it will continue to fill in, and we feel like this is a good approach, because what we don't want to see is just a monochromatic, single wall of evergreen. I think it's good to break it up, and from an environmental standpoint, it's good to have variety in the different native species that we're putting back in there.
So I certainly agree. I wasn't suggesting the entire line of the fence, and all that reasoning sounds great to me. It still strikes me that it's a pretty small section that has the arborvitae's, and they're such great cover that I wonder if there's any midpoint there, but that's your judgment, not mine, but it's kind of my reaction to seeing it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
But certainly trust your judgment on that, and I'm not suggesting a continuous line.
Yep.
Certainly spot on there.
Yep, great.
Thank you.
Thanks. So on the next slide.
Do you have some things that could be added later on, like later in the process? If you find that, okay, there's one house that's, you know, really getting a lot of light or getting a lot of noise, and with that, there's something you could add it later on, right?
And the nice thing about this too, is you see we've got a fair number of trees there. So I like, I like the placement of the arborvitae's, because that's kind of the beginning point of how we're going to attack this. But while we're in construction, we can move those left or right, depending on what each individual neighbor would like to see, so that specifically tailor it to their needs and get the absolute most amount of coverage possible. And as you say, we can always add later. So this is a good place to start, and we can modify when we're in the field. And then if need be, one or two extras, three or four extras is not going to really hurt us at that time, so.
Okay, great.
So the next slide is about staging. So there was some concern, again, from the neighbors from previous projects, where construction staging spread and spilled out into the neighborhood, and they were very concerned about this big project not doing the same. What we're showing here is the staging for the entire project. So our goal is to work our way out from the back of the site, which is the top of the slide here, work our way towards the front, towards 125. That purple dotted rectangle is the staging, you know, we would, we're calling it phase one and phase two, but the idea is to work on the entire site all in one season, to the extent that we can and that the weather allows. But we are not going to open up the entire site all at once. So when I say phases, it's the same season, but step one, step two. So step one would be that top field that's on the page, and we'd work our way towards the bottom of the page. In either case, step one or step two, we're still staging within that purple rectangle. And that's a very large rectangle. It's almost the length of a football field and about half the width. So it's a large area. It provides for the storage of vehicles, the storage of some equipment, the acceptance of materials, and that is at the edge of the existing middle school parking lot. So we've put it internal to the site, in the area that is the most approximate to the construction activities, but also furthest away from where the neighborhood is. And so it works, I think, for everybody. It gives us a site that's central. If we stage at the far extreme of the bottom of the page and then have to bring materials to the backside of the site, that becomes very difficult, and eventually the contractor will just not want to traverse that distance. So we feel like this is a good middle ground and satisfies the concerns. We're clearly not having any staging in the neighborhood, which was the concern that was raised at the last meeting. So that's where we plan to be.
How would vehicles get there?
They're going to come in through the middle school site.
Current middle school.
And from 125, actually, as well. And if we have to, we mentioned this at the last meeting, if we have to create a temporary construction entrance from 125, we can absolutely do that. We're going to not cast the die in that direction until we interact with the contractors, because we don't want to dictate what they might prefer to do, but we will certainly drive access in a way that makes sure that we're protecting the neighborhood at all times.
So just one there, I appreciate you don't want to dictate what they want to do, but if they were to say, hey, we want to come in on Parker Street, then you would.
We'd say.
Dictate there, right?
Of course, right, yeah. So it's middle school, and it's 125, and it's none of the neighborhood streets.
Great, thank you.
And that's firm.
Yeah, good, thanks.
And when is this, like, what is the timeline again? Is this during school year time or summers or one of the?
So it could be the tail end of the school year. You know, it's our, our construction season is not really tied to a school year. We're trying to catch weather. So we want to be as early in the construction season as possible, so that's, you know, April, May-ish, May.
School's still going on.
So school will still be in session, but it's important for us to get as many months as we can with the good weather.
With the good weather, yeah.
Because our costs rise to the extent that we push this into the bad weather season.
Yeah.
So we don't have the luxury of trying to schedule this around the school season. And the site is large enough where we can accommodate the staging and not interrupt too much.
Won't drop parking or anything?
You know, construction vehicles will be coming and going at times when people are trying to access the school, but we can also put parameters around that, where that 20-minute period where people are trying to, you know, drop off or pick up, maybe we limit construction activity so that they're after the pulse.
Yeah. So are we also assuming all the fields will be, like, off-use? Like the other, because right now, obviously, the fields are, you know, used for soccer and other sports, so will it all be off-use?
We don't have to do that. As I said, it's all one construction season, to the extent that we can achieve that, but we're certainly not going to disrupt that entire footprint all at the same time. So the goal is to have step one being the upper field or the upper part of the page disturbed first, while the other part could be left alone.
Okay.
So yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. So this is the same sketch that we used to describe lighting last time, and so this hasn't changed. And I don't really have much to say here, but the slides that follow, we've got some additional visual images that will further reinforce that, that light spill issue that was brought up by some of the abutters. So these are the same type of lights that we'll be using on the field, and you can see how close that picture was taken to the field itself, and you see the photographer is standing in the dark. Same here with this picture. These are, these are the best pictures that illustrate it, and you can see the detail on the chain-link fence, which means they're about 10 or 15 feet away from the chain-link fence, and on the other side of the chain-link fence is where the light cutoff begins. And so these lights are spectacular. This is another example, and what you see outside of the field to play is darkness. And so I know these, it's hard until you actually see it with your own two eyes in person, but this is how these lights work. They're spectacular. They've gone way out of their way with technology over the last 10 years to develop this kind of light cutoff specifically because of the spread that the old-style lights would give off, and it's a, it's a spectacular product. So we.
You specified the manufacturer and the model of light.
That will perform like this, yes.
Okay. And is, has that been installed regionally? Somewhere where one of us just wanted to go take a walk, drive?
Yes. We mentioned Merrimack last time, but we'll get you a list, because yes, it has been. Yep. And there's other pictures that continue to show the same thing, so we can, you know, go through those. But you see, and again, it's, the only glow is actually happening on the supporting area to the field. Once you get outside of that, it's, it's dark. Now, without, without question, when you look from your house to the field, you see a field that's lit up, so it's, it's not a dark space on the field, but it's not intended to be that way, so.
Does the design of these lights, restricting the light just to the point of interest, does that also result in energy savings?
These are more efficient fixtures by definition, and because they're LED, you're, it's as good as it gets in terms of energy, so yes. Yeah. So there's more pictures, and I think there's a few more too. But it's just, you know, same, same type of example, so. So then this slide talks about traffic and staging. And one thing I want to preface my remarks before I get into the detail on these two slides. So before we came on the scene, the town had already envisioned what was going to be happening here with the athletic fields and the new ECC, and with improvements to future middle school use and the rest. And so even before we were hired, the town had studied the traffic flow and the movements, and had determined independently of us that these, this type of new use, or expanded or improved use, I should say, at this site, is, is completely capable of being handled by the existing infrastructure that's there. Now, some of the concern that was brought up at the last meeting was just the nature of how people try to skirt around access and how they park in the neighborhood, and our project can't address that. That's an enforcement issue with the individual neighborhood streets, and I understand that that's already a proactive piece within the town and can continue to be that way. Our project will not impact how the town manages the enforcement of people who try to get around parking or accessing this particular site. But what we can do is discuss how traffic will flow at the site and how we believe things will work out pretty well. And so what this sketch shows is really a staging plan of sorts on how the, the site itself will be used throughout that afternoon time period. Because we, we talked at the last meeting about how there will be no athletic events happening in the morning, so that morning drop-off period is safe. It's the afternoon time where high school or others could be coming to the field and using it when the middle school and other schools were getting out. And so what this sketch shows is the deployment, if you will, of the different times of release and how things can work. So Monica, if you could just scroll up just a tiny bit.
Down.
Oh, the other way, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah. So what we're showing here is, is middle school release. So that's what, around 2:20?
2:20.
So middle school comes in from the middle school entrance, buses go out towards 125, cars exit around the building, and that whole thing happens roughly 20 minutes. I'm sure there's some stragglers, but that big pulse of activity is about 20 minutes long. And at that point in time, the kindergarten and preschool has not released yet, and neither has Atkinson. So you're only dealing with middle school release at this point in time. High school comes later, right? Is that on the next slide?
High school, high school gets out around the same time as the middle school, but they're not at the middle school at the same time, because there's some processing.
By the time they, anyone from the high school would get to the middle school, the middle school pulse has largely passed, because there's just a distance and logistical issue of leaving the high school and getting your supplies or your equipment and getting over. So even though they get out at the same time, just the fact of geography, they can't, they can't converge at the same time, unless they're leaving early, and that's something that we, we can't control. The next slide shows what happens after the middle school pulse is over, and the preschool and Atkinson get out. So if you could, right, so this one, Atkinson comes in from the side street, preschool is coming in from the middle school entrance and cycling around, and so middle school has largely left. Preschool is doing its dismissal. Atkinson is doing its dismissal, but they don't really compete with one another. And so this is when the pulse of academic uses is over, and then the use of the athletic fields is expected to begin. So we see this as kind of a sequencing of how the activity and the attraction of vehicles would be impacting the various access roads. And certainly, the intensity of those individual academic uses is intense, but when those intense periods pass, then the site is now open and clear for the intended use. And then I think the final slide.
So do you have any sense, I'm not over there for drop-off or pickup, preschool and kindergarten, how much queuing there is now? You know, is it just around that back-left parking lot? Is it going all the way down through the middle school now when they're?
You're talking about middle school queuing?
No, for the preschool and, for the ECC, when they're picking up at around this time. If it was backed up currently, now you're going to be adding sports teams coming in and trying to park either up at the top right or at the top left.
So, right, that's an important distinction to make, because the preschool and kindergarten largely comes in, and when our project is finished, there'll be an entrance in from 125. So they can come in from 125 and do, and do the rectangular loop that's off to the left of the sketch, whereas folks who are desiring to use the athletic field could park in the new, larger, middle school parking lot, and now they're not competing.
So they're not, they wouldn't be crossing paths?
That's right. And because the parking lots are not really large on the left side of the sketch.
Right.
You would naturally go to the larger, easier parking lot, because the access is easier for sport use, and you're not trying to compete with what you already know is an active area for the kindergarten use, as they're going through their pulse.
Right.
So it's a bigger parking lot, better access, and just by So it's a bigger parking lot, better access, and just by definition, people are going to, sports folks are going to stay away from the kindergarten activity if they're coming at that time, because that area does get very thick and congested until that pulse passes.
Okay.
So we feel because middle school has already done their pulse, now the big parking lot is open and available, and that's a perfect synergy for how the athletic use would begin to start using the site. And then on the last page, I think we've got a table here. Oh, yeah, that's kind of small. Right. So what we've done here is we've added up the different users. So this is existing parking lot users, so middle school, Atkinson, and the early childhood center. This is from the North Andover Middle School Department website, a number of employees and staff at each building. So that's 165 users. Existing parking spaces before our project even comes is 309. So there's capacity for the existing users in the parking lots that are there now. We're adding 160-some-odd spaces in the new plan for the new project, bringing a total parking space count to 488. According to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, for a multi-purpose, multi-field athletic complex, the number of vehicle trips is 150. And that's for a seven-field site. The IT doesn't go down to a four-field site, which is what we have. So for a seven fields, the IT guideline says that the demand would be 150, new vehicle trips. So when you add the 150 to the 165, we're well under the 488 parking spaces. So when the field is being used by both entities, both athletic use and academic, outside of the pickup and drop-off, which are not looking for parking spaces, they're just cycling through, the project easily accommodates the number of users who are going to be here.
What about buses? I'm not sure if this is just going to be in-town practices, but if there are going to be games or matches or even transportation from high school or other schools, you may have buses which take up a lot more space than single cars.
Yeah, and we don't typically provide parking for buses. Buses will find a spot to park on the side and, you know, discharge their students so they can get to it and then potentially go find a spot that's vacant and come back to pick up when the event's over. So buses are not really an occupier as much as they are a drop-off function.
So if the project proposes... A lot more parking spots that are needed. Why did you design so many parking spots? Why are they necessary?
There's always, you know, parking's one of those things that sometimes you can't have enough of. And so we, it's a balancing act. We're trying to accommodate special events. We're also trying to accommodate when there's a high demand, you know, very popular event or game, so that there could be an extra pulse that the site could contain. And we're also trying to provide for a little extra activity within the school uses for their special needs. And then at the end of the day, we have enough program space to accomplish the objectives of the athletics and the recreation piece, and we just decided to draw a line and not add any more athletic programming, and we decided to even out the parking and go in that direction. So it's a balancing act. We could certainly peel back the number of spaces, but based on some of the comments we're getting, you know, I think this is a pretty good place to be in terms of balancing the needs of the project in a technical standpoint, and then also accommodating that intangible that always exists. You only get to build it once, and if we've got the space for the parking and it's going to serve to benefit the different assets or the different users that are trying to exist here, it allows that overlap to occur.
Where did those comments come from specifically regarding, well, I guess, parking, general use that you just referenced?
The IT, Institute of Transportation Engineers?
No, but you said you'd receive comments.
Well, that was at the last, well, at the last meeting. And we've also, to be frank, we've had, you know, 40-some-odd meetings preceding this point in time with the community. So we've gotten a lot of input, and the direction that we've represented in the plan is where the stakeholders and the abutters and other town officials have said that the project should go. And so we felt like, all things considered, that that number of parking was the right place to be.
Something I also had about... From the Stormwater Review, that was a comment as well, if some of the parking could be replaced with some type of low-impact design, right? And maybe you want to consider land banking or something like that? I don't know, but that was a question.
Wasn't the response that those nine spots were needed? So I thought the response was?
Right, exactly. They were necessary.
That was...
See if I...
So this was on page two, 1D, that the peer review recommended the applicant considering extending the buffer of wetland. And I believe it said they didn't want to?
It was...
Is that that one? There might have been another one too.
Hold on, I'm bringing up.
I think I'd rather have more parking, at least especially to start, see how things shake out. And if you ever want to, you know, change into open space, I think it's easier to go from parking to something else than it is to go to parking.
That's how we, that's where we landed on this too. This is a multi-use facility, and so, you know, it's possible that the IT numbers could be off and that you would need the extra spaces when the overlap occurs with the different athletic uses. We're talking tonight about the overlap between academic and athletic, because that was the focus of the comment we got from the abutters. But there's definitely a need for overlap between the athletic uses when it's purely athletic, right? And so you'd want the ability to accommodate that.
Yeah, and I think the point is, well, I'll take it too, if this is going to be for this complex, but if there's a big event at the middle school, even the high school, it's good to have that.
Right. These are the technical numbers for the individual uses in their standalone capacity. But as soon as you start to have special events that are piling up, or not necessarily at the same time, but one's ending and the other's beginning, it's that overlap that's really sometimes hard to accommodate, because you've got the same amount of people from two different events. One's leaving, the other's coming, and the one who's leaving hasn't left yet, but people are arriving early. So this allows you to accommodate that and not have people on top of each other.
All right. So the goal isn't to fill up the parking lot all the time. The goal is to have spaces.
That's correct. You want the ability, and again, we're building it once, you want the ability to have that space there. And the site accommodates it quite nicely. If we were constrained and really tight, I would start to say, let's pinch this and go in a different direction and shrink. But when you look at how the site lays out and all the programming that we're getting, it makes a lot of sense to do it this way.
Okay.
You envision people like from other towns using this, like in other places that you develop like this? Does it draw like other towns? Because I guess they can't really keep them out, right? So to speak, or how does that work?
Yeah, you can't. It's a public facility. There was a comment from the last meeting that the town, one of the abutters suggested that maybe the town not seek to rent the facility out to out-of-town users. So that's one way to hit that, head that off at the pass.
Yeah.
But...
Yeah, it's public, right? That's right, yeah.
If I get an opportunity to address that, because in fairness, this is the design firm, and we may not necessarily agree with this perspective on that. Wonderful, I appreciate it. It's a way of an opportunity just to come in and...
Sure.
So I'm Andrew Mayle, I'm the town manager. Certainly have other comments later, but I'll save those. Specifically to the use, this is one of the steps taken by town meeting with the vote of both the school committee and the board of selectmen, was to divide the site into three spaces. On the right and left, for the better way of looking at it from a two-dimensional perspective, are school sites, maintained and controlled by the school committee, and the center parts of where the recreation fields are have been transferred to the care and custody of the board of selectmen, specifically for the purpose of permitting and field use. The expectation is that there'll be a committee dedicated to making sure this facility is not only maintained but controlled from a use perspective. We absolutely will permit this field. Does that mean someone will occasionally show up and throw a ball around? Of course, we expect that. But the full expectation of this site is that it'll be permitted for use. And so other than that casual use, the idea of a bus showing up or, you know, 10 cars with 30, 40, 50 people using the space is not at all expected, because we'd expect that that's going to be enforced and be strictly permitted. We highly permit our fields today, and more often than not, those are only used during the permitted periods of time. So I think it's important to understand that we recognize in some ways the attraction this could be, and our expectation is we're going to manage it for North Andover use. Would there be some expectation that a softball team plays somewhere from another community? Of course, that's expected, certainly with school use and other use. But as it relates to sort of that casual, unexpected use, we fully expect to manage through that. Second to parking, one of the pieces that missed, I fully agree with the chairman in this particular case. We were conscious about making sure we added parking spaces because of some of the comments made earlier. But I also, I need you to realize that parking in this particular case on some of the hard services is specifically intended to allow queuing to back traffic off the main thoroughfare. So as an example, there's a fairly significant expansion to the middle school parking area. That's not just intended to support the improved use of these fields, but also so that the queuing, if you've ever been here during middle school, that the queuing doesn't back as much onto Main Street, that the cars can get off of Main Street. Because what you don't see, if you could take that purple line and wrap it around the perimeter of the parking lot behind the middle school, it gives us more cars in the queuing line as part of general traffic in terms of various drop-offs, getting them off the busier streets. It's very, very difficult coming down Main Street if you're continuing straight ahead and people are taking left into the middle school, you know, getting around to the right of those vehicles. So some of what was done from a traffic and parking perspective, which was done in parallel to all three of the concepts of a recreation complex, an expanded ECC and the prospect of expanding the middle school, was to understand the impact on each of the schools, and that's why it was designed that way and approved by the necessary bodies to do that. So I would caution you a little bit to not mess with that unless we re-involve our engineering firm, which is TEC, to make sure that any eliminated parking doesn't affect some of those other uses.
Did you gentlemen have anything else? Or were you getting at the end?
That might be the end.
Yeah, it's in the slide box.
Mr. Mayle, do you want to, then, have other comments? And then we'll go to members of the public in case they have questions for anybody else. We'll come.
So I appreciate that. What I've prepared and I want to provide the board and certainly will make available to the public is a general timeline for this project dating back to, you know, when we began. So if I can give you a copy of that.
Thank you.
This just really goes to, because I think sometimes we get through these projects, we certainly appreciate the public process, but sometimes it's not fully understood how much thought, forethought has gone into this or any other project. Singly, during my 25 professional years in municipal government, we've had more public meetings on this project than any other project been involved in, and that includes school building projects. What you see in front of you over multiple pages is an identification of 35 publicly posted meetings that discussed this project. Everything from town meetings to school committee meetings, board of selectmen meetings, the advisory committee, and so forth, the CPC meetings. But also, what's not on this list, in addition to the 35, is close to another dozen CPC meetings that discussed the funding of this project, a handful of additional selectmen meetings that discussed this project, and one or two additional school committee meetings. And I only say that to understand that as we look at this site, or this particular project, it's important to understand that this project was not done in isolation to the entire site. We certainly recognize from the pictures here that we have active school buildings, right? Not just in this immediate area, but across the street. It's a very active area from a traffic perspective, we all understand that. And so as we began this process back in January of 2015, we immediately incorporated other stakeholders like the school department to make sure that the decisions being made all along included those folks. And so things like the parking and the traffic and the traffic flow, where the ECC was located, decisions about what we hope will be an expansion renovation of the middle school were all contemplated at the time that this project was going through, a sort of vetting period. And so with that, I don't need to sort of list each and every meeting, but I think it's important for the public and the board to recognize that public import is important. This is a significant project, but this is a project that was not done sort of in isolation from the greater universe of what's happening in that particular, you know, very busy area. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Could you talk about, we had some, there was some discussion at our last meeting about the fields being turf fields. Just talk a little bit about how the town has approached that, what you know about, you know, I talked a little bit about what I know of towns in general, how they're approaching fields these days, but could you talk about that and any safety issues, health issues that have been considered in deciding to go with turf fields or the particular type of turf fields that you're thinking about?
Certainly. So the primary consideration, as most communities go through, is the, is maintenance, right? Is that if we look at the existing space today, the underutilization is a result of the fact it's very difficult to maintain large spaces like that. Often, they need resting periods, if that makes any sense, as it relates to field use. If you actively use a field in the spring, you likely have to rest it in the summer and possibly the fall. So you get less utilization of the space and a longer maintenance period for those particular spaces. So communities have decided to go with, you know, what we used to call in the good old days astroturf, but it's no longer called that. There's various products that really are, have been designed to reduce injury from where they were originally. I happen to play on astroturf, I'm of that age, and fell on it a few times, and it was concrete with carpet. And it did not feel particularly good. And in these days, they deal and address those kinds of concerns in terms of injury. As it relates to the topic that really probably five to eight years ago had sort of picked up some momentum, which is the health risks associated with certain of these products, we've made sure that the product we used at the high school, which has been in operation since 2004 and replaced two years ago, meets the kind of specifications to make sure that doesn't happen. So we installed a field in 2004. For those folks who don't know, that there's two fields actually, one immediately in front of the high school and one on the back. Doesn't matter which side you call the front and back, there's a field on either side. Both of those use an unofficial surface. Those surfaces have had no increase in injury and no identified health concerns raised from those fields. Those fields were replaced two years ago, so they came in in '04 and replaced, and they were replaced with the same kind of product to make sure that we address the kinds of concerns that were raised many years ago. There was, again, it's more of a sort of national discussion on this. So we feel very comfortable that the specification will include the product, which doesn't impact a sort of health and wellness piece, either from an injury perspective or from a cost and agenda perspective. And those will be included in the specification to make sure that those aren't issues. It was identified, I think Monica identified, the police, I have a specific response from the police department as it relates to the cameras. We have a current vendor, we've always had a vendor as it relates to cameras. They're working with the police and the IT and have identified how this product would work and be looped into our broader network so that it could be tied back into public safety. They've been very specific that those cameras would be not facing toward the neighborhoods or have any reflection or scope that would get into homes. But I think we can all recognize, and I think it would be the benefit of the neighbors, quite frankly, to make sure there's some level of security and protection. And the best way to do that is to integrate some level of cameras onto those open spaces and make sure that they're linked into our public safety network to make sure that we are aware what's going on in the space from a vandalism and security perspective. So that review has been done. I think ECM is our vendor that we have under contract, and they've looked at this particular project, and will continue to work with Waterfield to make sure that it's designed properly.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Your earlier comment about how the site was split into three areas, the schools and then the center, it's a terrific plan with respect to the permitting. So the client here with the designers, it's actually the board of selectmen that are running the project?
Yes. It's actually, as it relates to asset and our chart, it's the town manager.
Okay. Great, thanks.
And I have a copy of that layout that was presented to town meeting, again, had to be approved by the selectmen, school committee, and ultimately town meeting. But the idea, again, is you're creating an asset that you want to make sure there's proper security, proper permitting, and proper maintenance. And the schools recognize in terms of operating that kind of asset, that's far trickier for them than it is for us in terms of resources. So they would in fact apply for a permit to use the space. As it goes to Ms. Crane's comment about the current use of the staging of use, we've had conversations with the school committee already and the various youth leagues about the use of the space. Generally, we're saying there's unlikely to be use, because it's easier to say no and then work that off. Our fields committee and youth groups are working with us hand in glove as it relates to both fundraising initiatives, there's a small fundraising component here, and use of the space, and are fully expecting that the space will be unlikely to be utilized for a period of time.
It's sort of a little bit outside of the actual scope here, but since you're here and since it was raised with us before, some of the concerns were for people parking outside of the actual complex and outside of the park areas. Again, I'm not sure there's anything we can specifically address within a special permit about that, but, and again, my thought was, you know, if that does become a problem with these added fields, then we can look into things like resident permit parking or no parking at certain times and more enforcement. Are those things that have been discussed and thought about and somewhat planned for in this?
Yes, so twofold. One is, I have been in contact with neighbors in the past around the existing activity as well as the possible expanded activity. I've made promises to those neighbors, those promises appeared in either emails and minutes, and as I've said to them, they're more than happy to reference my emails or bring it to a future meeting of some board and say that we didn't follow through. Two things. It goes, one, first, again, to the parking. So in terms of evaluating the reworking the site to add parking, having more onsite parking allows us, from an enforcement perspective, not to get into some debate that there's not sufficient parking to support the space. So again, having greater parking, although I'm certainly not the watershed person, and I can appreciate that, keeping parking does two things. It allows people opportunity onsite, and from an enforcement perspective, allows us to be louder about making sure that we say to folks, this is an expectation of parking there. We understand there's an impact... We understand there's an impact on the neighborhood here. I think that the architect and the committee has been sensitive to that and should continue, as should this board, be sensitive to those things that we can do. We're committed to making sure that enforcement happens properly. We'll evaluate what that means in terms of whether it's, we don't have a traditional permit parking sort of structure here, but it doesn't mean, we have examples around town where we've eliminated parking during certain days of events in areas of the community, we've put up cones, we've done enforcement. The community recognizes that this is an asset, but also an impact to the neighborhood, and we should be taking steps to make sure that that's the case. Again, it goes to the care and custody question. It's part of the reason why everybody recognized turning this over to the custody of the town manager's office and the Board of Selectmen was a better avenue with no criticism to the schools, because it's not a, the weekends, it's not a traditional school use. And we, quite frankly, have the enforcement entities on the police and other departments to make sure that happens, as well as the maintenance. You know, the barrels are going to fill up over a weekend, we want to make sure those barrels are empty so the site maintains, continues to look good. So it made perfect sense to transfer the ownership to the town. So from that perspective, we're committed to making sure that we reduce the impact on the neighborhood.
Okay, so why don't we take any, if anyone, members of, why don't you gentlemen, we'll have you guys, everyone kind of step back. If any members of the public, it's still a public hearing, want to make comments or have questions, I'm going to ask you to come up, state your name, where you live. If you want to make comments, please make your comments first. If you have questions, address them to the board and then we'll call, if we can answer them, we'll answer them. If we think someone has more expertise, then we'll call that person up to answer the questions, okay? So if you have, anyone wants to come up and say anything, come on up.
Again, Sue Fosha, 50 Parker Street, North Andover. Thank you for your comment. It reassured us. I'm sorry you're leaving. Okay. When will the Parker Street gates be closed? In usual, it was like at four o'clock after two to four. With all these activities in the fields, is those Parker Street gates going to be remained open?
What do you, if you have, is that your only question?
No.
So why don't you go through all your questions?
Okay.
And then we'll call out people.
And who will help with the traffic control on Parker Street? Right now, we're getting inundated in the, the fields haven't even started, but with the school situation in the morning, people are parking on Parker Street. We're having a hard time even backing out of our driveway because they don't want to even access the school property. And we just don't know whom we would have to see to rectify this problem. It's going to get worse when the, when the fields get in operation. We're already having a problem now with school being in operation, with teachers, not teachers, but family members dropping off their children prior to the gate. And once the fields are in operation, it's going to, Parker Street's going to be used as a, as a parking garage or a parking area. And the lights, I hope that the lights will be concentrated to the field, but we, I live on Parker Street and I can see lights shining through the field. What time will these lights be shut off after nighttime usage? And the construction vehicle is Parker Street, I think it was addressed already, that the construction vehicles will not use Parker Street as an exit.
Correct.
But we're still going to be exposed to a lot of construction noise and stuff like that.
That unfortunately is somewhat uncontrollable.
Because the staging area is right outside Parker Street.
There will be noise during the project, I mean, everyone will try to do their best, but yes, you know, during, during the hours. In terms of the lights going off, I mean, I think that might depend on what activities are going on, you know. Obviously, I don't think there'll be football games at midnight, but, you know, softball, baseball will probably go until, you know, early evening. But we can try to get some more answers on that and on who will enforce the gate and the parking. Those are the questions, right?
That's right.
Okay.
I just wanted to put it on record. Okay. Thank you.
Someone want, Mr. Mailer, anyone can jump in on that? Do we have anyone who can talk on that?
About one.
Well, hold on, why don't we get an, why don't we get an answer, try to get an answer to this question, because I may forego any other questions. Why don't we do that first? Do, we'll get some, we'll get, try to get some comments on that question, then we can have you come up, sir.
So we have not, we have failed on the Parker Street entrance and gate. We respond well when we fail, but we've been very reactive. So we'll continue, we have to improve. Up to this point, I'm not blaming the schools, but it's been this sort of joint effort between the schools and town to try to figure out when that gate's supposed to open or close, especially in the winter, as folks know, because we bring equipment through there to plow. We have to do better control. I think part of the reason, you know, it's interesting, I've been here a few years, but as part of that, there was this longstanding debate about who controlled that field, who controlled the sites. And one of the things that's clearly happening as a function of this sort of delineating the spaces is that you will have an office to visit when you're not happy. I won't be in that office, but, but you will have an office to visit. Yeah, that's right. It's easier than no. But I think Ms. Reardon can speak to the fact that when she emails or calls, we respond. And I think having that direct point of contact, the place you can go, a selectmen's meeting if you're unhappy, quite frankly, as it relates to the issues like permitting and lights and those kinds of questions, having clear care and custody of a space is essential at this kind of use. And I, and I fully expect that you'll get the kind of response when you're unhappy about reacting in an appropriate way. So I think that we could be better about the gate and will need to be. I'm not as worried about the spill over because, again, I think we can do an aggressive form of enforcement on the spill oversight. Construction's construction, there'll be, our hope is that there'll be a middle school expansion at some point. That's going to have construction too, right? So we understand that that is part of what happens, but our job is to minimize the impact in the neighborhood and make sure that we set the rules up and the people in place so you have a place to go when you have concerns.
Steve Fosha, Parker Street. I was just a little concerned about this AstroTurf. Now, are we still going to have fireworks up at the middle school with the AstroTurf?
I believe that is the plan, but I'm sure the fire.
Well, how about the?
Hold on, I believe the fire, I'm sure that the fire department will weigh in on the appropriateness of fireworks and whatever field that we get.
Well, it seems to me hot embers will melt or burn the AstroTurf, and we're going to have to replace these patches of hot embers. I get hot embers in my front yard from the, but we don't care about that.
I'm sure the fire department will weigh in on that. I've never heard of it.
All right, now.
It's the field turf. It's not like the AstroTurf that you would expect at an old stadium. It feels much more like grass with like little pellets, but it's.
Now, my grandson plays on AstroTurf in Shrewsbury. They, they have to have separate cleats for AstroTurf and separate cleats for grass. They can't bring Gatorade onto the field, they can't bring lemonade, all they can bring onto the field is water. Okay? And now, how is AstroTurf going to hold up to animals? We're not going to let any, any dogs on this AstroTurf, huh?
Those are all great questions.
No dogs on this AstroTurf.
I'm personally, I'm going to.
No droppings on the AstroTurf.
I have two weeks left, but I would eliminate dogs. So.
No way.
Let me talk first to the fireworks. A year ago, when this question arose, I asked the fireworks company to get together with the Waterfield Design and others to evaluate the likely products used to find out if fireworks could be used on the site with any, without any collateral impact on the material. And the pyrotechnics company was clear, the answer is, they can set them off there, it doesn't impact the field, and they do it in dozens of communities already. So this isn't, you know, all you need to do is get on YouTube, I guess, maybe it's a good thing and maybe it's a bad thing. But some interesting videos about, you know, the fact that these are, these are flame-retarded materials that are, that wear pretty well. Typically, the replacement on these surfaces is about 15 years. You cut them out once the infrastructure's in place, you roll it back off, you put on new material, are fairly easy to maintain and fairly easy to replace. I personally, and again, I can't necessarily speak for all of the policies, I have two dogs. I just don't bring them to fields with, with people at this level, and I know some people would don't like that, but to a certain extent, if we're going to have pets on this space, primarily dogs, and we would want to identify by rule and policy where those dogs could congregate, it's not a dog park, but having them run freely across the space is just not particularly logical. I'm not dismayed or dissuaded by the use of the material because we're not going to use all colors of different kinds of products. Generally, it probably will generally reduce the amount of litter within the space. I understand why they don't use this other material. Again, there will be rules associated with the space. As it relates to the cleats, I look at it this way today, they either wear no cleats because it's hard pack, or they wear mud boots because it's mud. And that's the site today. So if instead they're wearing sneakers or different kinds of cleats, I think it's probably a break-even proposition. I was being a little fresh about the last one, but I think, you know, I think the improvement is, is an improvement overall and good for the community. So we don't expect any change in location for the fireworks. We think the added parking will help reduce the impact on the neighborhood, and we see this as a community asset, multi-generational, that, that isn't just about young people arriving after school, but it's multi-generations congregating on the same space, grandparents leaving the kids off to a ballgame, walking around a perimeter walking track, younger kids using playground equipment. So we see it as an opportunity, a positive opportunity and a quality of life improvement for the community.
Right. The turf makes it a three-season field rather than what should be a one-season field if you're going to maintain it. So you get three times the use.
Can I also add that the first review from the fire department did say that they would be analyzing the material that will be used on the field specifically to make sure it is fully retarded.
Excellent.
Hi. Hi. Lee Blumel, 54 Bradstreet Road. I just wanted to clarify further, I have two comments. One is a further clarification about regarding times of operation, specifically the impact of noise and light pollution, both of those things. What I'm curious about is who would be setting up the rules regarding how late games could go? Residential neighborhood, lots of toddlers, lots of babies, I can hear, you know, I hear the football games down from the high school field. So I'm just very curious about who would be engaging the community in a conversation around the hours of operation and what time the operation, because 10 o'clock at night is very different than 8 o'clock at night for families. So that's one question. And, and of course, I assume that as a planning committee, one of the first questions you always ask is about the environmental impact, given the IPCC report that we have to have our carbon footprint by 50% in 12 years to avoid the very, very worst impacts of climate change, even in communities like this one. So my question would be, has anyone analyzed the environmental impact of this project? I mean, that would be everything from the plastic in the AstroTurf to the number of trees being cut down for the parking lot. And how will that impact be offset in other areas of the town, whether it's by planting trees, you know, other, other commitments that the town would make? So I guess my general question is also, do you even ask that question for each large project that comes through? I know for many of us who have children, who we hope will live decades to come, it's a, it's a critical, critical conversation. Thank you.
So as to the second one, generally with fields projects, that's not a question that we ask, because I think we're putting up generally more trees than we're taking down. I'm not, I'm not aware, are there trees coming down?
So there's a net, net how many?
Net increase of 40.
Net increase of 40 trees on the site?
Yeah.
One thing that's uncertain, sometimes we focus on whatever we call the product, right? Not grass.
Right.
Currently, in order to maintain any of our sites that are natural grass, we are using pesticides and fertilizers, products which are not environmentally friendly. We will not be using pesticides and fertilizers. So in this sort of balance, which is a very fair question, we're adding trees, we're creating the ability for people to walk and exercise in a way they don't have in terms of a central location today. And we're going to be eliminating the use of pesticides and fertilizers on this site because they won't long be necessary. So it's a great question. From our perspective, you know, in sum, this is an asset, a net gain or a net add.
And we are, and we are, we do have a, we do have watershed and stormwater reviews to regarding, so in terms of environmental impact on stormwater, we have done the review on that, and that's ongoing and will ensure that that's a positive as well.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm kind of new to this. Just to clarify, that walking that you referred to, is that just around the bear tracks or is there plans for planting and trees to actually make that a possible all-season walking space and not just super ugly?
That's a great question. So, one of the things, do you have a chance, could you throw up the map? It would just be helpful. So one question I did not answer from Ms. Brunell, and I apologize, was the timing. Yeah, and I envision, and I've expressed this to the selectmen, and you hit me on the record today, I think a committee, a permanent committee should be formed, informed, sorry, which would include residents and people who manage our fields, talking about the use, addressing the kinds of concerns. You know, there's a balance here. We're going to get broader use of an important asset, but we have to manage that to make sure we're not adversely impacting the neighborhood. And so I see from a maintenance and operation permitting perspective that this not fall under our existing field committee, which works really well, by the way, but all of a sudden, this is, you know, we're adding this to the middle and it's a really large project. I see this as a separate group that has some of those stakeholders that have been involved in the project and other stakeholders from the neighborhood, being involved in a, you know, recreation complex committee whose responsibility is to make advisory comments to the people who make the decisions about maintenance and use and those kind of things. So I think this kind of facility requires almost a separate governance sitting with inside the regular operation. We can't just handle this by adding it on to existing staffs. I think that's the best way to deal with that. Secondly, interesting enough, up there in the upper right, so the perimeter walking track walks around or provides a walking path, you see it in sort of brown up there, around the entire perimeter, not just what would have been the sort of running track. Originally proposed, but we eliminated it because of neighbor concerns, was a walking area through that, the brown area to the right, which is.
Wetlands.
Wetlands. And so we got some feedback that there was concerns from the neighborhoods that that would bring people closer to their homes, and that idea was eliminated through one of the 35 or so public meetings. It would have expanded the walking track even further. So it was contemplated to give you a more natural nature look of walk, but there was concerns that, you know, maybe in the long term, as people see the use of this as positive, we can reintroduce that idea and see if the neighbors are more open to that concept. But everything around the entire perimeter here, and this is a 16-acre site, will have a walking path with low lighting that will allow people to run the perimeter. Today, a primary walking area is around the common, and for those who, folks who worked around the common, you get a little dizzy if we walk around, you're around the common, right? It's because it's rather small, so you have to do a lot of laps. Not that I'm trying to get people out of the common area, but this provides really a more proper venue for folks if they want to walk around the perimeter. They will pass everything from, you know, trees and greenery to fields to playgrounds. And again, hopefully in the long term, maybe we'll be able to expand into that sort of wetlands wooded area, because I think it would provide for a more natural place to walk. But that was eliminated from the plan when there was neighbor response that they, they struggled with including that at this point.
Kim Reardon, 62 Parker Street. I just want to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Mailer and Rick Green, because I know that we come here and I think Rick thinks that I exist to make his life miserable. I'm going to buy you a beer, Rick, when this is all over. And if Mr. Mailer comes back, I'll buy, I'll buy you a beer too, okay? No, but seriously.
Beer will never water in your flowers.
Mr. Mailer mentioned the number of meetings that have been held regarding this whole project, and I, Rick, I've seen him over the last couple of years. There has been a lot of input. We've certainly been given a lot of opportunity to raise our concerns, and I hope that we can all understand why we are so vocal, because this is going to have a huge impact on us. Only speaking for myself, I'm not necessarily against the project. I am very nervous about how this is going to impact, you know, my home, my neighborhood 24/7. So we're just doing, you know, due diligence, but I do appreciate the time that all these people have put into it, and I do appreciate the responsiveness that we've gotten from Rick, Terry Holland and the others, and Mr. Mailer. And I have emailed Mr. Mailer several times regarding the Parker Street gate, and he's been awesome and always gets back to me. So I just wanted to express that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Just wanted to.
Hi. Jennifer Murphy from 50 Bradstreet Road. I'd just like to request a little more information about the, the lighting. Concerned about the number of light posts now being installed, it looks like far more than there are now, although I didn't see. Hi. Jennifer Murphy from 50 Brad Street Road. I'd just like to request a little more information about the lighting. Concerned about the number of light posts now being installed, it looks like far more than there are now, although I didn't see a schematic of lighting for the existing conditions. So, that might help, or perhaps I missed it, and you could point it out.
We have for the existing, but you want to bring up the light, go to the lighting one, and then we'll have our consultants up there.
Because the pictures I saw where you showed the lighting is shielded, I can appreciate that. But then, is that the same type of lighting in the parking areas? That's to the west, the large parking areas, which is closer to my neighborhood, and how tall they are? I'm concerned about that. So, yeah, it looks like quite a bit more lighting. And they're also quite a bit taller, I think, than what exists there too. So, to the extent that more information can be provided, perhaps, I'm not looking to spend more taxpayer money, but even a light study of some kind to show the throw would be helpful. Some more concrete information, other than someone saying tonight verbally, "Don't worry about it." I would appreciate that.
I think we probably have that. Why do we have, that information is probably already available. Do you guys want to just talk a little bit about the lighting?
Are they there on existing?
Not sure about the existing lighting.
So, when we were at the last meeting, we talked a lot, were you at the last meeting? No. No. So, at the last meeting, we presented this plan, which shows proposed lighting, and there are different heights. The photos that I showed earlier this evening were all focused on the tallest lights, because those are the ones that people have expressed the most concern about. And those are the lights that can spread light the furthest because of their height. But that's mitigated by the fixture type, and I went through that extensively earlier this evening. The other color lights, so the circle, the green circles and the orange circles, those are parking lot and pedestrian level lights. So, the pedestrian level lights are 10 feet tall, so not much taller than the entrance.
Which color are those?
Those are the green lights.
Okay, great.
And then the orange circles are parking lot lights, and those are, how tall are those?
30.
20, 25 feet tall. So, those are...
And how tall are they now?
So, it's roughly the same height.
Same height?
Yeah. And in fact, these are better fixtures, because the older fixtures are by definition outdated and inefficient, and they spread light a lot further.
So, those are shielded as well, like the stadium lighting?
Not the same way, but in a similar way, yes. And I can provide the technical data so that you can look at it and see for yourself.
Do we have it available?
Lighting, here it is.
If we had a lighting spread like a...
So, what we could do is if you could just, Monica, if you could work with the gentleman just to put a lighting document, make it into a separate PDF, put it on the website so that anyone has access to it.
Like a photometric plan?
Yes.
Yep, sure.
So, we'll put that, so I think the data, I think we have the data.
Okay.
We'll put it up.
Yeah, more concisely, perhaps.
We'll put it up somewhere so that if you have access.
Oh, that's great. All right. Thank you. And also, so, I mean, I'm happy that this site is being refurbished, on the one hand. And on the other hand, I'm a little nervous about the scope of it. We're going from five to seven features, and seven, I'm being generous, features, I mean, you know, soccer field, football field. So, five to seven currently to about 16, you know, when it's all said and done. So, those 16 features, playground, botched, they're all going to draw more people, more consistently, more, you know, traffic flow. So, I do get a little nervous that there was no traffic study done specifically for this. I understand there's pre-existing data that maybe I can also find, but if, to the extent that you can make that traffic data more concise as well, would be very helpful. And then the noise, right? The noise factor about, again, getting back to the scope of this and the features it's going to draw. I'm excited that it's going to be such a draw. But again, the noise, we have an amphitheater now. What are we, what are we proposing for that? Band concerts? Because I can already hear those from the town common, which is fine, but now it's closer to my house. So...
So, there was a discussion at the last meeting about the amphitheater, and that they believed based on the design and the topography of it, that the noise would be pretty well contained within that amphitheater based on the acoustics of how it was set up, which...
So, I just, there's no date, like, there's nothing concrete we can point to to say that, you know, band concert coupled with the play, kids at the playground coupled with the soccer game coupled, because in your bylaws, it does mention excessive noise. So, what, how do we define excessive? Because in my mind, we're getting there.
Yeah, okay.
So, if that could be addressed at some point more concretely, I would appreciate it.
Does the design, for the design team, does it include estimated sound levels, decibels, different distances away from areas of activity?
No, we haven't done a sound study or a noise study on the entire project, because it's outside of the amphitheater. It's spectators and athletes. So, they're really, to my knowledge, there's, there's no impact there. I mean, you'll have activity, but that's what this is supposed to be, activity. In terms of the amphitheater, at the last meeting, we talked about how the design of the amphitheater, I don't know how the stage is run, or how the sound is produced on the common, but what we're looking to do here is something very similar to, a lot of small speakers spread out around the amphitheater, so that the noise is not being projected from one central source and pushed out into the air, but small, like divide and conquer, small speakers that are spread out evenly, so that the sound is proximate to the people who are there, and not trying to be pushed out from the stage.
Is it also a concrete, is it a concrete amphitheater?
No, it's not. It's actually, if you had seen the plans that we had shown before, what we're proposing is actually quite nice in terms of the natural aspect of it. It's grass tiers with a concrete edge, simply so that you can hold the edge of the grass and sit on it firmly. But then there's trees in the middle of the amphitheater, so that will also buffer the noise. And it's, and it's aimed towards the middle school building. So, it's, it's cut deep into the side of the hill. So, from the field itself, you would, you would be looking right over it.
So, that grass mitigates the sound?
The whole, the fact that the amphitheater itself is mostly a natural product, with the grass steps and the trees, will help reduce the sound significantly. Sure.
That's good. So, I just, I worry about, I'm glad to know that. I just worry about that coupled with and compounding the noise with everything else that may be going on. So, I just don't know how we're defining excessive. I'd like to know how you would define that at some point. Again, I'm concerned about the stormwater runoff. I live down sort of gradient from this site, and so, we already have flooding in that wetland to the west there. And so, to the extent that that can be mitigated for, again, would be advisable. And what I think that covers it, what I would appreciate too, is, this is almost like a Q and A, you know? So, to the extent you can have one with the neighborhood. Clearly, some of us were informed of this meeting, and others were not, and...
I think that went to Mr. Mailer's point earlier, that there have been 35 meetings regarding this.
Yeah, but that's, there's been a lot of passive communication, meaning like, we have to seek it out versus active, which I did get a certified letter tonight, which I appreciate.
If I can address it, just in fairness, and I, maybe it's the lack of time I have to, you know, left here. But the, I appreciate all the comments. I think the mistake would be to continue to, mistake, that's not fair. I think the challenge would be to continue not to recognize four years' worth of work, all of which, the minutes of the 35 meetings are all published online, that there have been, the magnitude of the meetings. And so, at some point, and I respect all the comments made here today, and I think they can continue to be incorporated by the planning board, and by the way, continue to be incorporated to a certain extent in our plan design as we move forward. I think those, we've had those meetings, and we can always, if we keep on moving that line, the challenge is we keep on moving the line. And I think that those exist as opportunities already. So, as an example, the TEC, which is the engineering company that did all the work in the Green Street and library area under the Safe Roots to the School project, they were the same engineer that did this site work. That exists, that's incorporated here. That wasn't an anecdotal thing pulled off by some Google Earth thing somewhere. The layout of the parking here was designed by a professional engineering firm to address the kindergarten, the middle school fields project, and the middle school addition. That, that exists as a, as a document. And all of the minutes and all the interaction by, by everybody who attended those meetings exists in the form of minutes. And I think it's important to respect those people too, who came to all those meetings, who altered this project already. And, and to be careful not to start to unwind that a little bit, and, and change some of the plan that those folks already weighed into, because then, you've got to go back to those, all those people that interacted over four years, and make sure that they're comfortable with those additional changes. So, I think there's no doubt this is going to be a more highly-used space. That actually is the goal. It was the goal from four years ago. It's an underutilized space with the expectation there's going to be more use. We respect and appreciate the fact that that has an impact on our neighborhood. Anybody who tells you that there's not going to be more activity here misses the point of the project, right? So, we should be telling you that. Our goal is to make sure that it's designed in a way to reduce and manage the impact. I think you heard that about the amphitheater. And let me tell you, anybody who thinks that, you know, Maroon 5 may be a bad example today, or any other band of the like is coming, it's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the kinds of things that are on the common. All of those discussions about the impact and noise were included in 35 public meetings, and the reason why the design firm has done what it's done in terms of this sort of natural reaction, the lighting the same way, making sure that it's managed and supportive of the neighborhood, and issues about traffic flow and parking. So, I do want to respect, and it's part of the reason I provided the planning board, the work of all of the people in the community who showed up to 35 public meetings and provided a level of input that have led to this product, and tell you that those, that feedback all exists today in public documents posted on, online, are accessible.
They're here to address traffic and noise. It's in their common, so that's why...
I understand. But they're doing a site plan review, which, which is about a number of things that do not necessarily relate to all of the topics raised today. It's, it's a balance, right? And so, it's not about a yes or no question. It's about making sure that as part of construction, as part of the layout, as part of this is managed, that, and I don't want to find their job, but they have a role, and the public had a role, and that public role was incorporated in the product you see today, over a four-year period, and through multiple iterations. And I, I do want to respect those folks, and by the way, acknowledge those folks who are not here today, who participated in one meeting or another over a four-year period to make sure that the design is what it is today. Because I do appreciate their reference as well.
Can I ask you?
This is not, I'm, I'm trying to help, but this is not a Q and A to me.
No, but you're leaving, and my question wasn't answered. My original question wasn't answered.
Okay. If, when, after everyone's had a chance to talk, if you want to come back up and ask something, you can. But we're really going to do this in an orderly fashion. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Margaret Legal, and I am a direct abutter. My deck is practically on first base. And I'm concerned about the, if you just, could you lower that a little? First of all, I want to say I agree with everything everyone said. I came last, so I wouldn't have to repeat everything. There are 60-foot lights behind my windows. I am the house where it says 60 foot. I'm right there. I really don't want to be concerned about a 60-foot light under or outside my bedroom window. How late, someone's already brought this up, how late are these games? And I'm also wanting to know why softball runs that late. I thought this was for the girls softball team. That's an afternoon at the most, early evening. Why do they need 60-foot lights?
Well, so, a couple of things. One, there is the walking path there, which allows people to be safe when they're walking.
That's, I understand that. But you've already said there are 10-foot lights for the walking path.
But as to that, I think, as I understood from Mr. Mailer, that the idea is to form a committee to basically create rules for this complex. And I think, which I think is a really excellent idea.
I think that's a great idea.
So, I, I imagine that as part of that, the hours, the noise, those things will be discussed, and rules will be put down that will establish days, weeks, hours, permitting, and all of those things. So, I think we put up as many lights as may be needed to facilitate everything. And then, there may be times when they're not in use, because, you know, it's 9 o'clock and it's not being used. That's just an example. But I think we put up as many as are appropriate, and we figure out the rules. That comes later on. And some of that may be for our board, but a lot of it may not be for our board, and that's what we have to talk about.
So, to your point, we've asked for a packet of the lighting. And can I just ask that, in the lighting analysis, that it show the arc of where the light circles are expected to be cast? Because I would be interested in these perimeter light poles, like the one by your house. What I think we've heard is the design of the lights is to shine towards the field and not away. But I'd actually like to see what the projected footprint, I apologize to the design team, I'm probably not using the right terminology as it relates to lighting. But what I'm trying to get to is, can the plan you show us indicate where the light footprint is expected to be hitting the ground? Is that possible?
Can I answer that?
Yes, please.
And I have two more questions.
Why don't we get this one while, while we're on it? Why don't we get an answer to this one?
So, our submission had included the light level.
Yep.
So, you'll see the lumens, and it's a bunch of numbers.
Yep.
So, it's a hard document to get your head around, but it's the technical response to your question.
Okay.
That illustrates where the light's going to spread. Now, we've talked about a lot of things tonight, so I understand sometimes these things get missed. But the photographs that I showed earlier about the cutoff in the light are specifically meant to address your house and the other homes that are on the other side of the boundary of the fence that contains the perimeter of the project. So, when I showed the cutoff and how, you know, eight feet away from the fence, it was dark.
Right.
It was specifically to address this condition. And now, the other issue here is that we can't, we have to decide whether we're lighting the softball field or not, because we can't light the softball field if we take the poles that are near your house and move them someplace else. So, the softball field can't be lit. We've minimized how many poles can be there, and we're directing the light into the field and down. And you saw from the photographs, on the other side of the pole, there's, there's no light. You, as I said earlier, when you look out your window and look at the field that's lit up, you will see a bright field. So, I can't stop...
Yeah, I heard you say that.
I can't stop that occurrence, that visual occurrence from happening. But on your side of the fence, it will be as dark as it can be, as dark as those photos showed.
So, I think the materials that you showed tonight were very, very helpful in elaborating from the questions we had about lighting at the last meeting. And I think the plan to provide additional material, the technical diagram showing the lumens, the level of light compared to the poles. But the other thing that I think could be very helpful is, this type of lighting is unlike what we grew up with.
Of course.
So, when we hear about a 70-foot pole, it makes us nervous. And so, the other thing that I think will be very helpful is the list of where is this new technology lighting actually in place in the area?
That's right.
So, we can actually go look at it. So, I think it will be very responsive to the questions and the concerns, and very helpful, at least from my perspective.
Absolutely, sure.
To go see what it is you're talking about.
Yeah, sounds good.
Earlier, we spoke about a photometric plan?
My experience in the past with those, it shows basically, it has a number value as to the amount of lumens that will be illuminated there. So, you'll have a one, a two, a zero. Is that something your lighting designer can provide?
Perfect.
Great.
I mean, it, it may not completely resolve your concerns, but at least it gives us something to look at that's, you know, quantitative.
And you had two more questions.
The other one was about, I mentioned last time, the last meeting about the offgases from the turf. Has anybody looked at that? I know it was mentioned that it's not, there's been no reports from the high school. But that is, you know, that's not long-term. And if you look at just something simple as the internet, you can find long-term studies about the ground-up tires and the turf coming off and...
So, as far as the, the information we got was from the town manager, from Mr. Mailer, that they had studied this particular product and found there is no evidence that it's carcinogenic. And then, we did ask the Board of Health to review it. They didn't seem to have any concerns about carcinogens.
Who studied it?
Who studied which?
This turf. You said they studied it. I said, who studied it?
I, my understanding was that it was part of the process of choosing it, was, was getting information about its, any levels or concerns, and there hadn't been any reported.
So, that's been pretty much just off the table then?
It's my understanding that the town administration has studied that, and that they don't have any concerns about, about that. It's the same one that the high school used, and that they don't have any concerns. The Board of Health was also asked about, they had, they said that as long as it met certain lead levels, which I believe it did, that they didn't have concerns either.
So, we did ask the Board of Health after the comments at the last meeting, because I raised the same question.
Yes, you did.
Yeah. And so, my request was to go to the Board of Health. And so, we do have a communication from the Director of Public Health that's part of the record. And what he indicated was that there's, there's guidelines that should be followed with respect to the type of rubber and the levels of lead, and then cites a consumer product safety standard that should be met. So, my concern was to have Board of Health weigh in... So my concern was to have Board of Health weigh in, and they have in this document. The other thing that I heard tonight from the town manager was that this is, if I understood correctly, going to be the same product that has been successfully used at the high school without any, now, I think he said known health impacts. I'm not sure that's the same as studying it, but those are the two bits of information that I've heard tonight as a result of the questions asked at the last meeting.
Okay, I'll just say one more time, I don't know why people aren't concerned about the black pebbles, dust, or whatever that comes from the turf all over the kids' sneakers and airborne. It's carcinogenic. It's old tires, and that's just basically what it is. I don't know how they're getting that not to be carcinogenic.
Okay. Well...
I'm not a scientist. I don't know. I just know what I read.
The town manager cited that it's, I think, the same product that was used, so would you be willing to elaborate on this a little bit based on what's been used at the high school?
And wasn't the high school just replaced? How long was that down?
So the high school field was originally installed in 2004. That product had, there was no data, which is a study, right? However you look at it, whether you go off and, no data coming back from the use, an extensive use of a field for 13 years of anything that identified the kinds of concerns that were raised. The field was just replaced, again, with another product. It's only been a year plus, but again, this is, these products improve, they don't degrade, right? They don't devolve. The product becomes more safe if there was a safety question. What he said relative to the Board of Health's response was that we would commit, and I think the design firms here, to make sure that the standard identified by the Board of Health in that communication was incorporated as part of the bid spec. It's not brand, I don't want to sit here and say, "It will be that," because we're subject to bid, but we issue bid specifications, and the responding companies would have to comply with that bid specification. In essence, what you got from the Board of Health was a specification. Follow this guideline, and you're okay. And so the expectation is that the bid documents would include information to make sure the guideline that the Board of Health has identified as okay would be followed, so that the material put on that site is consistent with that.
And are you aware of any reports related to the use of the artificial turf at the high school with, you know, black pellets or discoloring sneakers or...
Oh, I can't speak to sneaker discolor, I don't have that. I mean, everybody is...
But you're not aware of reports of concern coming from the use of the high school artificial turf?
This, let me give you an example. The short answer is no. The longer answer, this project with the material proposed, so as an example, when we went to replace the high school, the schools, their athletic administration and the school administration wanted to replace the material with the material proposed. They didn't, they didn't want to replace it with natural grass, and the reason is, they didn't have concern. So there's no greater direct user than the people responsible for sending the kids out on the field for the past, you know, 13, 14 years, and though that user, primarily the school department, which is responsible for the health and education of our kids, said, "We want to replace that turf with this." I mean, I don't know how you could be more direct in terms of getting that kind of, not just something on the internet, and there's a lot on the internet, robot, all kinds of things, right? How could you not get a more direct reaction than something that happened specifically in this community? And that was our school department saying, "We want to replace the fake grass, whatever we want to call it, with a similar product." And by the way, the schools were also involved. Members of the school committee were on the committee that went through this process are aware of the product we're using, and again, affirmed not only the design and the layout of this field, but also the material being used on the field. I think between that and the Board of Health, that's a pretty solid assurance about how people feel about the product.
Thank you.
Hi, Lee Blue Melbeck. I just, I probably wasn't clear earlier. I actually had two process questions that only got partially answered. So the first process question was, who would determine the rules for the area? And Mr. Mailer put on record tonight his suggestion that a special committee be formed. He, as we know, is leaving in two weeks, so I'm wondering who would follow through and make sure that such a committee was formed, that it was advertised, that neighbors were invited to it, et cetera? Because it sounds like what would happen right now, unless we form a new committee and find enough volunteers and all that, is that it would maybe fall under the current fields committee? So I just want to clarify that it sounds like Mr. Mailer made a suggestion tonight for a new committee to decide on the rules around things like how late noise and light pollution would go, but it doesn't sound like that's something that's, that sounds like it's his suggestion, and I think it's a great one, but I wonder how that would be followed up. That was the first process question, and the second process question was really about the impact of, the carbon footprint impact of big projects like this. Does the planning board take those into consideration, which would include the lighting, the construction, all of that, and just consider, when we do a large project, how to offset that impact in other ways in the community, however that may be? So that's really not related to this project. I'm just putting it out there, because I'm here tonight. Thank you.
So with respect to the first process question about the committee, I think it's a great point. We've got a terrific suggestion from the town manager who's leaving, so I just want to throw to the board, is it appropriate or not to consider as part of the site plan review, maybe not conditioning a special committee, but noting that it has been recommended? Is that something that is appropriate? Because one of the things we say in our decision, we comment on impacts to the neighborhood. It's in every decision. So would it be appropriate to use that decision to document the recommendation that the welfare of the neighborhood concerns be mitigated by formation of this committee as recommended by the outgoing town manager, who was the client for the four-year process developing this project? It's just a thought.
Yeah, no, I think yes. I think we definitely can't condition it. I think that's a town manager and Board of Selectmen, and potentially even town meeting, but mostly Board of Selectmen and Town Manager who would put that together, but I think there's a way to make a finding of fact that it's been recommended and a comment that we think it's a good idea.
So really, what I'm trying to do is preserve the wealth of experience that led to this recommendation as the town manager's leaving, and have a record of that somewhere.
Well, if he's not out controlling things, I'm sure we can get him back and get it done.
So let me be clear about what I expect of any committee. This is about operation and maintenance. So this isn't an all-citizen committee determining when the lights go on and off. This is a cooperative committee with staff and resident involvement as a joint effort, almost like, for lack of a better view, almost like, but not, a nonprofit that is the, like, we have a Friends of the Senior Center and a Friends of the Youth Center. This is Friends of the Library. I know this isn't quite the same, but all those groups have a custodial-type relationship with the parent group and provide the kind of feedback that makes those entities better. I see that as part of that, that the group would make recommendations back to the people that otherwise have the care and custody. I have no problem, as long as, and I'm certainly more than happy to read the decision, take a look at it, I have no problem with that kind of reference in a decision, where you just have to be cautious of, this is obviously the planning board can't direct the town manager, right? But I have no problem with that kind of recommendation, given that this asset is both so important and so impactful, right? It's both. So I have no problem with that recommendation, so long as it stays within that bounds, some kind of, and you guys will do a better job of wordsmithing than I, that some kind of sort of friends group that is advisory to those people who operate the facility would be formed. I think that's, I'm happy it would be ingrained. I think it gives an opportunity to put words behind actions, or words and an opinion behind those things that I speak in a meeting, and I do think from the conversations with the Board of Selectmen, they respect that recommendation, and I think they would support it.
So to your point, though, is there a more direct manner that you plan on using as you're transitioning out to, I mean, if you were staying here, I would be confident that, you know, as a town manager, you have the authority and would act to form this advisory group.
Right.
So all we can do is document it and say, "Hey, great idea, seems to resonate, has a bearing on the welfare of the neighborhood." But what more direct action could you take as part of your transition out to help assure the residents that such a committee would be formed by the proper authority?
Yeah, that's a complicated question. So one of the things that you realize in roles like mine, and I appreciate the positive comments, is about five minutes after I leave, everything you don't like will be my responsibility.
Right.
And that's okay. Like, I get that. And so this may be your opportunity to actually say, "I said something," which carries with it the prospect that someone else will read that and see merit in it. I think that's legacy enough, because I'm not forming a committee on the last day I'm here. I think that would be unfair. By the way, it's an opportunity...
No, we don't committees.
For those people who don't know, because we'll outer Lynn Savage, who's sitting back here, please, if you can. She'll be the acting town manager beginning February 18. Lynn's been with the organization for more than a decade, is an extraordinary asset, was absolutely the right choice by the Board of Selectmen. So everybody mark your name down, take a quick photo.
Okay.
Because we're going to blame Lynn when it happens. So I think...
You've kind of just answered the question.
Yeah. So I do think, though, that, I do think, though, that that would be enough, because it would recognize the importance of what you're trying to accomplish, and I think it's the commitment I've made in several other public meetings with different groups. This is a really big deal in a very positive way, and the worst thing in the world at the end of the day is that it is not a positive outcome. And I think the way that happens is if we disconnect from those people who are users, who would also be on the committee, and those people who live closest to the project. We have to find the right balance and synergy between those groups, and I think you're going to find that the Board of Selectmen and whoever replaces me will feel similarly. It'd be hard to imagine they wouldn't.
I must say, within procedural history, we do indicate what departments reviewed, you know, reviewed the plans and what recommendations they made. This could be something that we add in a similar manner.
Great idea. Thanks.
Sorry, Margaret, I know you wanted to go last. I'm Matthew Ridgerton. I reside at 30 Spruce Street. And first of all, I do want to say, I'm actually very impressed with most of the meetings that I have attended in this process, and I'm actually very pleased, as a citizen and someone who's grown up in this community, to see the, not just our professional staff, but those who are serving in our interest, for the most part, are doing a fine job. Now, and I am actually supportive of this project, because I think that this has been an asset in the town that has been neglected for 40 years. Now, I do have some concerns. I know that I'd be interested to know what the final review of the stormwater engineering is. I'm probably, I'm fairly confident that it's going to come out positive, and I know that our questions still remain with the groundwater issues within the area, and I know that that really cannot be addressed. Though, I think one of the things that should be addressed is that the town needs a clear understanding that this is a long-term commitment to faithfully maintain this facility, not just above the ground, but below it. And that's one thing that this community doesn't always carry through on, to be honest. I mean, we don't have a very good history of successfully, long-term, maintaining our assets. And this, by the way, is going to be the biggest, most important asset we develop, probably in the next decade. This is not just our athletic fields, this is the new park, this is the new social space for this community, and it's about time we had one. Now, as an abutter, I know that the neighborhood is going to be impacted, and if you're going to tell me it's not going to be severe, I'm not going to necessarily believe you, because, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to say I won't believe you, but I'm not upset by the fact that we will have major events at this facility, and from time to time, we will have parking on our streets. I think the expectation is, don't park on my lawn, don't block my driveway, and take your trash with you. Now, I do have a couple of suggestions. One is on the lighting, and I'm kind of concerned with that, too, because I'm close enough to the field that we now get the aura of the fields. And I would say, at the moment, there are the security lights on the backside of the Atkins Consul, which are either inappropriate fixtures or inappropriately mounted, because they pretty much shine in everybody's house who are around the fields.
They're going to take care of it.
Awesome.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret. Margaret will be on our committee.
Superintendent is upset with that.
Awesome. But relative to the lighting, too, I think actually a tour of a location, if you provide lists of local areas that have these facilities, as an abutter, I would actually like to go out and see them at night in operation. And if the committee is going to be going out as well, you know, if you would share that information with the abutters, I'm probably not the only one that would like to do that.
So I was actually thinking about that same thing. So what we do is, once we get the list, we'll see if they're somewhere local, we'll see if we can make arrangements to have a site visit.
And the other thing, too, is that I have, the question is how this facility is going to be used during the day, during the school day. You've addressed how the schools will be making use of this now-public asset, but how will the general public be able to access that as well? And just looking at the site plan, and by the way, because of prior, let's say, poor planning, you're shoehorned into this site. I don't think you're going to be able to resolve the traffic issues. Because of the configuration of the Atkins campus over here, you have limited the number of access points to this facility. You're going to use Beacon Hill Boulevard, and you're going to use Parker Street. I don't see how, if this facility is going to be accessed during the day, you're going to get around that. Now, I would also tell you is, because of poor planning, you've also created those two choke points. So if you don't resolve what the traffic flow is going to be, one of the wonderful things about this process is it's brought the neighbors together with common interests. If the neighbors choose to park along Parker Street during your event nights, they're going to choke that point, the same with Beacon Hill Boulevard. So really, those who are responsible for this flow of traffic have got to manage it better. I know the school has been doing that for the year. It's got to be done better. That was the concern last time along Beacon Hill Boulevard with the construction that happened. I suspect that you can take all of your construction vehicles in off of 125 along the back of the schoolyard, but it's going to be the general traffic that's going to be following that. If this is going to be a successful facility, we're going to have more traffic, and if you start closing the gate, you're going to restrict that down. And I think that that's what's going to go, is that we're going to have more access along Parker Street. So if that happens, you know, that's going to take another management piece of this. And again, I understand that this is going to happen on big events. It happens every Fourth of July, and if you can figure out the Fourth of July, you'll figure out almost everything else. But I also know that with restriction of that, again, because of the configuration of the Kittredge Schoolyard now, is you have reduced that as a possibility to help with your traffic and your parking. I know that the configuration of 125 and Mass Avenue is coming up. That's going to affect this project and the traffic flow as well. So I'd like to have all of those things kept in mind as you move forward, and the expansion of the middle school is yet another one. My final comment, I guess, would be is that if the, I like the facility, I love the fact that we're actually offering some of these amenities in town. It's about time. I'm not sure that it's configured to make the best use of that, in that everything is jammed together, and maybe it needs to be spread out on the facilities to allow outside access that doesn't quite encroach quite as closely on the schoolyard. And that is my comments for this evening, because I believe that most of our concerns, again, later on, can be handled with the public development of the rules of use for the facility, either daytime, nighttime, and the lighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right, Monica, where do we go from here?
All right. So we will be receiving a photometric plan to help with the lighting. The stormwater, we are going to, we are awaiting comment from the peer review consultant as they provided responses as well. If you want to schedule a site visit...
But we need the list first.
Exactly.
So, okay, so the, those items and the list of locations, we can get all that for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay? So that'll be the plan.
Yes. Did you, how close are we to, I mean, in terms of review by other... Did you, how close are we to, I mean, in terms of review by other departments? I know conservation still needs to weigh in as well, and quite frankly, it's not, let's get some feedback from them as well.
Yeah. Okay. So, I think if we can get as much information as we can for the next meeting, then we'll schedule a site visit. And then, that puts us to the beginning of March?
Yes. We are looking at the March 5 meeting. So, let's see, our next meeting's on February 19, then our meeting after that is on March 5.
Okay. Do you need anything on that? Okay. All right.
Can I just ask one more question, if the town manager is willing? Just hearing what I've heard tonight, and hearing how much public input has already been put into this project, I just have the general question, why apply for a special permit for this project? Is, it is required? Because I, well, I understand from our last meeting that the school committee with the early childhood center, what, did not go through this process.
The school parcels, although this is all, currently remains under school custody, because we haven't finished the legal process, which was approved by town meeting. The school parcels are governed by the Dover Amendment, which doesn't require them to come and see you. Municipalities are not covered by the Dover Amendment, that's why we came to you on Fire Station, and we'll come to you in Senior Center and do that. Technically, we had, could we have gone Dover now? We could have, because it's still school-owned property, but that would have been disingenuous. This is part of the public process, it's a big deal, it's an important project, it should go forward, in my opinion, the way it is with minor modifications. But I don't want, in the end of the day, the community doesn't want, in the end of the day, someone looking back and saying they didn't have their opportunity. It's part of the reason I've given you the paperwork you have in front of you. So, even if we weren't required, we'd be here. It's the right thing to do.
But I think to the point that's kind of been addressed by Mr. Mailer is that I think we just have to be, we have to do our job in looking at this and the site plan review, but I think we have to be even a little more cautious than we might be elsewhere with a project that comes to us that's had just a little bit of work, and we need to tinker around with. I think we just have to be extra cautious where we tinker. That's all.
And I appreciate that, because I guess, and I didn't articulate it well before, but every change here means that someone else's input may have been discarded. And that's why we didn't come to you until we had, again, more public meetings on this project than any north end of a project in its history, because every decision has an impact, you know, how many parking spaces, those kinds of things. So, I think the chairman's right, it's important to understand that every change comes with it, a possibility that someone else's input would not have been considered. And I think that's a challenging balance, I understand that, but we appreciate the work you have to do.
And we appreciate, everything that's been brought before us, everything you've done on this and other projects, so, we thank you, we will miss you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And also, thank you to the, just quickly to our consultants, who took something from the last meeting, a comment, and already have worked it into a new plan, and something that at least satisfies one person. And the more we can do that within the plan, I think the happier people can be. It's great.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. So, we'll continue this public hearing until February 19 at 7 o'clock. All right. I think next, why don't we, can we jump to Merrimack Valley Transportation Management Association, do that presentation, and then we'll hit the bylaws? Is that okay, Monica?
Yes.
All right.
I do think some very good questions have been raised about the traffic. And it's something we would be, you know, that's within our purview, that we should be looking at.
Yeah. I think I got some better answers today than I had before about the timing.
Yeah.
Definitely, traffic and definitely, hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Jim Goldberg, President of Planning Board.
For allowing us to come before you this evening. I'm Andrea Leary, I'm the Executive Director of the Merrimack Valley Transportation Management Association. The Transportation Management Association, or TMA as it's known, has been in existence since 1997. And recently, we have undergone a strategic plan. The TMA is a public-private partnership. It's a membership organization of businesses, institutions, communities, and also some partnership with the state as well, with MassDOT. And our, the reason that we're here tonight is just to kind of come back and talk to you folks. It's been a while, it's probably been about 10 years since I've been here to talk to the planning board, and to let you know about some of the things that, you know, we've been doing, and some of the, some of the projects that we've worked on in North Andover. So, tonight, we have Allison Simmons with us from East Consult. She is the consultant who has done our strategic plan. She consulted with community members, business members in this community, as well as some of our other members. And she's going to present our findings. And we also have Gretchen Gorosky with us tonight, she's the TMA Program Manager, and she's responsible for implementing a lot of our programs and services to employees and residents within the community. So, without further ado, Allison, thank you.
And I will be brief, I'm cognizant of the fact that it's 9 o'clock, and I'm sure everybody wants to get home. As Andrea mentioned, we are a Transportation Management Association. I'm curious if any of you are familiar with the Merrimack Valley TMA, if you've heard of TMAs? A little yes, okay, a little no, good to know. Behind you are the list of our current members. As you mentioned, we're a public-private partnership, so we work with the municipalities as well as the businesses in the area. We did do a strategic plan, because as Andrea mentioned, we were working for over 20 years in the area. We underwent a year-long process, engaged all 56 of our members, as well as municipalities, to come up with a new vision and an understanding of what the future for the TMA looks like. These were our three goals. Obviously, we were looking to secure financial stability, as we mentioned, we're a nonprofit, but we get our funds through membership dues, looking to strengthen our membership engagement, and also to increase program participation. So, those are sort of the goals going into the plan. If we go to the next one, we talk a little bit about our vision statement. Our vision really hasn't changed, our vision is to promote sustainable transportation choices. This was a really interesting conversation to listen to, because there was a lot of conversation around parking and traffic and understanding the impacts of accessibility. So, that's a lot of what the TMA does focus on, understanding that we want to preserve the resources that we have, and make this the most livable and workable community that it can be. So, that's sort of our goal and vision, always, in what we're doing, is to look at that as our mission, so to speak. So, what's different, what came out of this process that's sort of changing our approach? Prior to this, our focus had really been on how do we get people that are currently working in the towns that we serve to work without using their car? Still, a large part of what we do, but as we looked at the strategic plan, we found that the issues that we really needed to start to address were sort of the future. So, how do we look to economic development? How do we deal with the future residential growth? Most of the communities around here are dealing with a big residential boom. How do we get those people to and from where they live? And also, employee recruitment has become a big issue for the Merrimack Valley. So, how do we obtain the talent that we want up in this area when we're not necessarily transportation or transit-rich? So, that's sort of the focus going forward for what the TMA is going to look at, that's laying a foundation for this sort of car-free living idea that we want to be able to promote in North Andover and all the communities that we represent. Yeah, of course, please.
So, do you work with towns on transit-oriented development? So, you know, finding housing, and then the building housing specifically around transit options or transit options that are possible, and same with building work, or, you know, around transportation, or is it kind of the opposite, building transportation around?
It's much harder to build transportation than it is to build it the other way around. Certainly, the TMA and Andrea has a strong role in sort of weighing in on those sort of developments, and trying to get folks like yourself, that's really the reason we're here tonight, is to kind of think about the future and the vision, the mobility access when you're thinking about these plans, and how we can ensure that whatever vision North Andover has for what the area is to look like, including transportation into that conversation. So, yeah, a transit-oriented development would be a development that we would obviously be strongly in favor of, as more people will be able to access transit without getting in their car. But looking to the whole, you know, town-wide, how do we, how do we make sure that the developments we're putting in are considering the needs of the town from a transportation's perspective, not just the signalization right outside the building, but the vision for the town as a whole?
So, for instance, I think you guys can all hear me, right?
Yeah.
Usually, I don't need a mic. But, for instance, so, I was a member of the Andover Economic Development Council, I'm not an Andover resident, but I represented the Transportation Management Association. So, I was a member there for six years, you know, and we worked on the development of an ID-2 district, which had transportation components and overlays, but presented greater opportunity for economic development in the River Road Andover, in the River Road area of Andover, as well as the Daskum Road area of Andover, also worked on the historic Mill District in downtown Andover, and oversaw a new parking management action plan for the town of Andover. Those are the kinds of things that we do in coordination, you know, with the communities. Monica meets with, well, we have a transportation and just kind of a regional planning group meeting once a month with Monica, and with the, one of the planners in Andover, with the planning director in Methuen, and also with the Merrimack Valley, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission Transit Planner. And so, we all meet to kind of identify, because, you know, transportation is regional, right? It doesn't just stop at the border of North Andover or Andover, or Methuen or Lawrence. And, you know, basically, what we're looking to do is what kind of projects are happening, where are they, what are some of the potential coordination, cooperation that we can put forth. So, that's kind of how, you know, a lot of how we work with the communities, love to certainly be doing a lot more with North Andover. And, you know, that's really why we're here tonight, because we really wanted to, you know, kind of talk to you and, you know, show you where we're at in terms of the Transportation Management Association, and our goals for working to actually improve mobility within your community, and connectivity, and accessibility for both your residents as well as employees.
It's definitely been difficult in North Andover, because we, you know, unlike Andover, we don't really have the commuter rail stop. So, if you're going to go into work in Boston, you pretty much have to take a car, it's very difficult. Now, we do have residential, more residential complexes being built near the mills, which, you know, hopefully can lead to jobs locally, which you might not have to take cars, too. So, I think that's somewhere we can certainly make improvements in. We've definitely talked a lot in our master plan, if you have the time to look at that, about connectivity and trying to get, you know, connectivity between Water Street and High Street and Main Street, so that, you know, you're not driving around all these places that you might be able to take some sort of transportation down there and walk around and not need your car, but it's hard.
So, here's the thing, right? You know, particularly in this area, as you said, you know, we're not a transit-rich area here, we're just not, and that's what it is. You know, certainly, we have the Merrimack Valley Transit Authority, and, you know, they do the best that they can, but it's tough when you're a transit authority, because what you're trying to do with the limited budget that you have, is you're really trying to serve everybody. And by trying to serve everybody, sometimes you really don't serve anybody, and that's an issue. So, what we're trying to do is to, and not that the Merrimack Valley Transit Authority does not do a fine job with the situation that they have. That being said, what we're trying to do is to develop these public-private partnerships, doing some surveying of residential developments, our businesses, to understand, you know, the commuting habits and patterns of employees and residents, what type of transportation they need. We're in process right now of doing a survey with one of our residential development members, looking to get transit potentially, like, on the weekends to downtown, with a variety of other residential complexes in the area, to downtown Andover, where they can, you know, visit restaurants or shop, but also have access to the commuter rail to get into Boston for things that they want to do. Allows them to maybe, you know, you might not be living car-free here in the Merrimack Valley, that, I mean, that would be lovely, but, you know, maybe not realistic, but you could be maybe living car-light, instead of having, you know, two or three cars per family, as many folks do in the area. You might now be able to use one car when you have these other options. So, what we're trying to look at is to get people to, and businesses and residential developers, to come together and say, "Look, if we all put together a little bit," and working with the state through potential grants with the state and such, you know, "We can develop some of these, what we call last-mile gap," or, you know, like, maybe a smaller connector service by residential development A, residential development B, residential development C, all kind of comes together, and where do these folks want to go? You have an understanding of that, and then you take them where they want to go in a short manner, short trip, right? Because if it's taking you an hour, you're going to get in your car, right? So, you take them in a short trip, and you have as much frequency as you can. And so, those are some of the things that we're really trying to, you know, work on.
I think that's who work on our site-walk connectivity plan, better connecting people to our existing infrastructure, to civic functions, schools, open spaces, businesses. This might be something that might help with that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I like that, I mean, we've talked about, you know, with the Senior Center, the move of the seniors that are having, you know, transportation with them, you know, to do downtown, but the idea of some of the apartment complexes, I'm trying to get, you know, when I lived in, outside of DC, my apartment had a shuttle that went to the train station.
Mm-hmm.
And it was like, you know, for just two hours each morning, and if you did that with a couple of different residential complexes, you could get maybe a bunch of people that just, you're right, cut down on one car and didn't use it during the day, and that, I think some of that would be.
Well, we have to be realistic, but what are our goals, but, you know, honestly, if you can cut, I mean, think about that. If you have, if you have three housing complexes that have 500 units per housing complex, I mean, that's 1,500 units, it's potentially 3,000 cars, right? You could cut that, you know, potentially, you know, maybe not in half, but, you know, maybe you cut it, you know, by 25 or 30% in terms of, like, the total aggregate. And then, from there, you're not only looking at that, but the TMA has other programs and services, like, you know, region-wide databases for, you know, carpooling. And so, you know, we might be able to identify, like, through really hands-on manipulation, you know, there might be, there might be, like, three residential complexes in North Andover that might have 30 people commuting to Framingham around the same time, right? Let's get those people off one, you know, like, off 495, and get them into, you know, some form of a shared service. Maybe it starts with a few carpools, it eventually goes into a van pool, and, you know, maybe we work with the residential developer to eventually have that van pool be subsidized. And if they're subsidizing that, now you've got a nice marketing tool also for why you should come and live at Residence A versus Residence Z over there.
So, Andrea just mentioned a marketing tool. So, part of what we, as I said, we were looking towards is what, the future. And so, I don't know, can we zoom in a little? It's, I know it's tiny, it's hard to see that, the slide. But basically, you know, the millennial workforce is here, it started in 2015, and by 2030, it's going to be 75% of our workforce is millennials. And from what we know is millennials don't, typically don't buy houses, and they don't have cars, and mostly are living outside of city centers. So, how do we attract that workforce up to North Andover, Merrimack Valley area, if we don't have transportation as an option? So, we can go to the next slide, this is a study done by the American Public Transit Commission, are they called? Public Transportation Association, which basically shows what I'm saying, that given a choice, this next generation prefers to be on subway, light rail, or bus, seconded by bicycling. Driving a car is actually the smallest percentage of what transportation modes that they're using, which is why they're living in city centers. 45% say they're living in city centers because it's easier to get around, 43% of them don't own a car. So, this is not just a thing that would be great for people who are existing, this is a sort of looking toward the future, is how do we attract the next generations of folks out to the suburbs if we don't have transportation options? So, we're looking to kind of try to start to create those. And Andrea mentioned a couple of them, you know, looking to regional transportation solutions, working beyond our borders to figure out where people need to go. The last-mile-gap shuttle, I have a picture up here of the Rev, which is the town of Lexington's circulator that goes from their, what's the name of the development, Andrea?
Oh, Hartwell Ave.
Yes, for the Hartwell Ave corridor to Alewee Station. It's been a very big success, partly paid for by municipalities, partly paid for by the businesses that are, some of them are permitted to do it. Typically, how this starts is we start with a business who is permitted to either belong to the TMA or to do this type of service. And then, our job is to go out and to create the service, but also to get other folks involved, right? So, once it's in place, because it's a permitted, it's like sort of having the stick before the the carrot, but what we found is, once we have somebody who's engaged with us because it's required of them, it's much easier for us to get all the partners along the corridor to then pay into it. People have, no, no, people just have a hard time sort of being the first one to write the check. So we find it's often, it's easier if we sort of have some assistance from the municipality to say, as part of your conditions, we'd like you to work with the TMA on this. That gets them to the table.
Is this example part of Middlesex III?
Yes. Oh, is, no, that's 128 Business Council. Middlesex III has the.
Are you analogous to Middlesex III?
Yes.
Correct.
So, so let's just take a step back. There's 16 TMAs in the state currently. My company, Northeast Transit, manages four of those, one of which is the Merrimack Valley Transportation Management Association, one is the North Shore Transportation Management Association, one is the Junction TMO, which is, you know, along 93, the lower end of Andover into Woburn, and basically junction to junction, 125 to 95 and, and 128 junction. And then also, the newest TMA, which Allison and I manage together, is the Assembly Connect TMA. So it's all of Assembly Row, all of the huge development that's happening there. We are, we're about six months into that process. We're finishing our bylaws and that type of thing. Middlesex III is, is a TMA similar to the ones that we manage, the 128 Business Council, Charles River TMA, a better city in Boston. So there's 16. They're usually geographically based.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely. So we can go to the next slide. The other part of the equation, and we were talking about this a little bit, is that housing, I think, I don't, you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, but what we've seen in other towns is that that's sort of, the majority of what's coming across your desk in terms of development these days is, is around housing. Commercial development is a little bit down, but this seems to be the boom. The Merrimack Valley Planning Commission did a study, a workshop with all the towns that they represent, and this, the multi-use large complexes is sort of the number one choice that people were saying is needed within their communities. And again, this has to do with, I think, attracting the next generation, right? We know because of student loans, because of a lot of situations with the economy, the younger generation just can't afford to purchase homes, so they are looking to these sort of complexes to live in. So we can start to attract them to the area by giving them the sort of housing they need. But again, we still have that transportation gap, right? So you're still, you're still going to need to buy a car if you're moving up to North Andover at the moment. How can we make this, these housings accessible so you could potentially live without a car or one car, as Andrea mentioned? So that's something we're really working with, a lot of the residential developments to kind of try to figure out that last mile gap piece as well. And then the other pieces of the residential besides the local transit options are, you know, we do a lot of things besides potential shuttle routes, you know, bicycle and pedestrian amenities, working with these folks on placemaking to make sure that, once you get to an office park or development, that there's stuff within walking distance so that you don't have to get in your car just to get a cup of coffee or to get groceries, you know, ride share, potentially tapping into Uber and Lyft as a way to augment shuttle systems, working through the TMA. So there's a lot of options. What we're here today is to kind of help you guys think about the TMA as a partner and potentially work with you ongoing to figure out what your vision is for North Andover and how we can help to implement that. So the last couple of slides, just to kind of talk about the roles that we have. So Andrea mentioned, we do advocacy, we work, we do pilot programming, shuttle services, data collection is a big piece of what we're doing through this new strategic process. And then just, again, working side by side with the municipalities that we work in to make sure that we're creating solutions that work for everybody across the board.
Do you have any specific programs related to Merrimack College or community colleges within your geographic area?
So interestingly, for the North Shore TMA, North Shore Community College was a member of that TMA, and I developed their whole Uber, Lyft pilot program between their campuses. So that was one of the things that, you know, we did for them.
And the last slide is just, just the ask. So, you know, as you're going through, looking at developments that you think about, maybe specific measurable mitigation goals you might put in place for the private sector folks to think about, so that, and that the TMA, TMA membership can be a permit requirement. That kind of gets them, as I said, to the table, gets us engaged in a conversation, thinking about how we go moving forward, or if there's specific transportation management requirements that you as a community feel like would be needed, to think about how collectively, if you have everybody along a corridor, you know, be part of that solution.
Do you have any examples of other towns that have adopted any one of these?
Sure. So the town of Andover, many of our members in the town of Andover are required to join the TMA as part of their site plan, special permit decisions. There are other, there are other communities as well. Framingham has, you know, has those permits. We have a list that, you know, we could, you know, get for you, and with actually the specific language that has, each town adopts the language in a little bit different way.
Not sure how parallel it is, but Boston has, any development over 50,000 square feet in Boston has to belong to their local TMA to.
And Cambridge has the PTDM.
So those are part of their bylaws? It just seems.
Sounds like that was part of a bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me if it's part of a bylaw, then that's something, though it seems odd to have it be a specific organization rather than belonging to a general type of, you know, I hesitate on that.
There's two developments that I can think of, Eaglewood Plaza and Princeville Properties, that we.
Conditioned that they have to come up with the transportation management, you know, just policy, and sometimes it's just putting brochures out at the countertop and have the information easily accessible to where people can get transportation options.
Yeah, and oftentimes, if you put enough, like, so the city of Somerville, for example, has a large list of TDM initiatives that developments have to put in place, 80% of which the TMA membership will cover, so that, you know, that it makes it a no-brainer for the development to just say, rather than me having somebody who has to implement putting out pamphlets or doing ride matching or, you know, shuttle development or whatever, I'll just join the TMA and do this collectively with my neighbors. So.
And Eaglewood is a member of the TMA. That is our member in North Andover.
Nobody else? Have you guys talked to anyone else?
At this time. We are, you know, we've been in the process of trying to work with Merrimack College to see, you know, to see if they would, you know, join the TMA. That has been iffy.
Have you guys talked to Minco? I think those guys are really approachable.
Who? So that has been, so that has been, so we, who's the gentleman that we worked with over there?
Well, the spot.
Sheevelli, yeah, Jim Sheevelli?
I know the name.
Okay, so.
We'll make some introductions after.
Yeah, that would be great. We'd love to.
Actually, a couple of comments, as a developer, we love transitory development. We worked with the city in Newark, Port, on helping them design a 40R district. We're building 76 apartments right at their train station right now. So we're a believer in it, and we're working with the town, kind of partnering to some degree in building apartments next to a senior center that the town is developing. And I love the ideas about putting a shuttle system, as there's going to be 130 odd apartments there, there's going to be a senior center there that used to be downtown, so now that connectivity between the two is a fantastic idea.
And especially like, so particularly with the senior center, so you have a use that is usually primarily in the middle of the day, 9:03-ish, you know, and then that is correspondingly a very nice complementary use to, you know, folks who are residential folks or, you know, getting to transit or coming from transit to, you know, an employment location.
Can use the same vehicle, right.
Reuse, rework, you know, those things work out really nicely for, you know.
Yeah, we find most of our members that are, even those that are permitted, find it to be, you know, they're not coming kicking and screaming to TMA membership, they really understand the value, particularly where we're looking to spread the cost of something like a shuttle or, or ride share program or whatever across all of our members, so it's not, you know, it's not just you, developer A, has to do a shuttle, it's we're going to put a shuttle on the corridor, everybody will benefit, so it's kind of collectively working together.
I don't want to prolong this too much, but can I ask them a question?
Sure, come on up.
The question would just be, because I know the town is starting on a sidewalk study or something like that, I don't know what the actual terminology is.
Connectivity project.
The connectivity plan. Is there any help that the TMA could give to the town or the town would need in putting that together? I'm a huge fan of building more sidewalks in town in an intelligent way, make people, make it easier for people to walk. I've watched people walking down Group 114. I understand the state's going to take care of that, but we have a lot of our own streets that don't have sidewalks in there.
Absolutely.
How can we make it help?
So, you know, so the TMA, you know, definitely we would work with Monica on, you know, working on plans, talking about, you know, marketing that information to people. What the TMA can't do necessarily is, is actually develop a full-blown study, because, you know, we are a small group, but we would work with Monica and the town to develop recommendations, you know, based on the information. We could help develop surveys, we could do all those kinds of things.
The actual plan, and it has, it's multi-step, so.
So I think what would be helpful is, could you guys get maybe some bylaws? I'd be curious, just to look at if there's been put in any bylaws, just to kind of see what that looks like, because without a bylaw, I'm sort of hesitant to put it into a permit. But I think it's something that we could certainly think about as we do permits, suggesting that that might be something that we would look favorably upon when issuing permits. And then maybe, you know, maybe we can talk offline about some other entities in town that may be good to make connections with the TMA.
The other thing I would like to say is that the state oftentimes puts TMA membership in the Section 61 findings for curb cuts, things like that. So there is, there is a Section 61 finding for the new residential development that's coming online on 125 that has a TMA membership requirement in it. And we could get you a copy of that, too.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Stephanie Cronin, that Middlesex thing?
I know Stephanie Cronin very well. As a matter of fact, Allison and I were just on a call with her today. Yes, we work closely with her.
Absolutely.
Yes. So thank you very much for your time tonight, gentlemen and madam. And Monica, thank you so much.
All right. Let's do potential May 2019 town meeting zoning bylaw amendments. What are we doing today? Yeah.
What I want to do briefly at the beginning is really talk about the calendar between now and town meeting, because we're at the point on the 14th of going to the Tribune with a legal notice, which then has to run the next two weeks. The, the public hearing for zoning amendment articles would then open on March 5th. And the intent of all this is really moving it early enough so that you could make recommendations in time for the printing of the warrant. So today, you've talked about three potential articles that the planning board would support, one of which is still ongoing discussion, and then there was the possible of land on Turnpike Street, as well as the earth materials removal bylaw.
Okay.
I have been speaking with town council, and we are drafting an amendment to the signed bylaw. We don't have it ready for you tonight, potentially the next meeting, but I am going to incorporate that article in the legal notice, just so it's covered.
Okay.
The one wrinkle in the schedule, so that puts it with the potential to continue the public hearing for three meetings, that's been customary prior to the print of the warrant. So on Tuesday, April 2nd, you would make your recommendations at the latest. However, the citizen petition deadline is the 11th of March. So if citizen petitions were to be filed, we'd go into the cycle again, so it's another legal notice that would have to be to the Tribune that week. It would run on the 19th and the 25th, and the hearings could open on the 2nd, which again allows for three meetings, if you were to add a meeting on May 7th. So I just found out that, I guess, when you approved the planning board meeting schedule in August for this coming year, typically town meetings held on the 3rd Tuesday. This year it's held on the 2nd. So the two meetings you approved in May was the one just prior to town meeting, which is really a five-minute meeting historically, and then the annual town meeting.
Okay. So, but it seems like it still makes sense to wait and see if we get a citizen, I mean, we don't have anything that we know of, right?
Right.
Okay.
So potentially, although that says meeting, it's to be determined on that night. However, if, so that would be the third meeting for a citizen petition, and you may make recommendations at the second meeting, who knows?
Okay.
Okay. So what was provided in your packet, what you had asked me to further research, was the CDD I, as it relates to banks with drive-through facilities. And so you have with you this map that I put together early on, which is really just a key. Hold on, let me cast this. So this is really just a key to the spreadsheet I'm going to bring up. You have a hard copy of each of these documents, but this becomes really important, because at the previous meeting, I think everyone had given me the sense that on CDD II parcels, you were willing to decrease the frontage, I'm sorry, the parcel minimum requirement from two acres to one, and then asked me to look at frontage by lot, as well as depth of lots in CDD I.
So we have the CDD I chart.
I'm trying to cast them for some of you, it's not letting me.
Okay.
Yeah, we do.
It's okay, what is it that you want to?
So on the chart itself, the spreadsheet, I've added the frontage and the depth columns to the dimensions. And so if we stick with the frontage requirement first in CDD II, which is the top section, there are parcels that are shy of the 250 today. And again, the thought was that with two-acre minimums, these lots would be combined, and then people would be able to achieve the 250. With one-acre requirements now, as you can see, the first two parcels, which are contemplated for the development that proposed this amendment, would get to 250 by combining these. And then 182 Hillside, which had concern about being an isolated parcel, they are at, these are approximate, but 199 is how I measured it for frontage. And so what we talked about was CDD I has 150 minimum frontage requirement, and II had 250. And so as you look at those, I mean, it seems reasonable that it could be decreased to 150. There's still a few challenging lots, but again, minimum lot size for those are also challenging. So unless they were to combine, they're not going to get to the minimum lot anyways. So the last four on, so number nine, 10, 11, and 12 are all under either Seville Development Realty, Alexander McGregor, Seville Second Realty, and 740 Turnpike. I think they all have similar ownership that, that meet that five-acre minimum for banks with the drive-through facility. We talked about eliminating the five acre, so this would allow for development on one acre with what you determine to be acceptable frontage.
So you think the 150 would be okay?
I think so.
And leaving it as 150 in CDD I?
Yes.
And would you suggest, and is it an acre requirement in CDD I as well?
CDD I's one acre.
Okay, so everything, so both development districts would be one acre, 150.
Right. So now the question was, would the depth allow for a drive-through facility in CDD II? And so if you look at those first four parcels and look at your key, the number 13, 14, 15, and 16, you could combine all four of those, and you're only getting to roughly the 46.
Right. 46,000.
And the depths are all roughly 100.
Yeah.
But if you look at Lot 17, that adds another 40 feet of depth from 114. If you were to look at number 14, the depth I have is over 400 feet, because it really comes off of the hillside section. And so then if you look at above, the depth on the lots above are roughly, you know, 133, 170. They're a little bit deeper.
Yeah, but you'd have to put all of those together to do that.
All of them together, I would think, yeah. And then as you go further, there's some really large lot sizes, but they're constrained with wetlands.
Did you see any downside to making it the all-consistent at, at one acre and 150 feet of frontage? Based on the chart, I don't see any, nothing strikes me as an imminent issue.
I mean, they'd have to be able to do a site plan that shows that queuing wouldn't be to 125, and that's why the depth comes into question. You want to make sure you have that allowance. I did look, unfortunately, I didn't measure the depths, but I certainly looked at banks I did look, unfortunately, I didn't measure the depths, but I certainly looked at banks with drive-through facilities that went into existence before site plan review, and, you know, if you think about the corner of Water Street and Main Street, there's that tiny little bank that has a drive-through across the street, it has a drive-through. There's the bank across from Low 5, which is on the corner of Pleasant Street and 125. It's part of a larger project, but the footprint for that bank is, you know, in the 20,000 square feet. Same thing for the one in front of Choice Fitness. I think that one's 27,000 square feet. So, we certainly have banks with drive-throughs, however, they were constructed likely before site plan review. And your concern on this road would be queuing onto 125. I'm sorry, 114. So, the Stonem Savings, which is in front of Choice Fitness, is 41,900 square feet, so just a little less than an acre. Across from that half, there's one, I had to measure it, because it's part of that whole strip mall parcel, that's about 15,000 square feet. Low 5, certainly sufficient parking and drive-through at 37,000 square feet. The corner of Main and Water is 21,000 square feet, and the corner of Main and Second Street is 26,000 square feet, so...
Those are under, those are under CDD-2.
No, they are not.
Those are under business, or do you mean?
I didn't...
That's the difference.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Okay.
Yeah, we're talking apples and oranges.
Good.
Hi, John Zerico, 182 Hillside. I'd like to comment on the banks that you just mentioned. All those banks are in areas where there's a lot of sidewalks, and there's a lot of areas for walking. That's not relative at all to this area up here. Like Alex even mentioned, we have no sidewalks in our area. Matter of fact, my children went to Franklin School, and they needed, there were walkers down Hillside Road, if that wasn't the most ridiculous thing on the planet. So, we had to pay for busing, which was fine, at least it was available. But those banks that you mentioned, with those smaller lots, they're in sidewalk areas with lots of sidewalks on both areas, and it doesn't at all reflect our area at all. And I also would comment on, if you do sing, frontage and lot sizes, pretty extremely at this point, it seems like, just keeps getting smaller and less and less requirements, you're just going to keep increasing curb cuts. I thought part of the goal was CCD-1 and 2 was to reduce the amount of curb cuts onto 114. And if you just keep reducing the size, reducing the frontage, you're just gonna, you're going to replace residential curb cuts with commercial curb cuts, if that's what you want. I don't know, if that's the best thing for the community, if that's the best thing for public safety, that's what it would appear to do. So, that's my comment on those.
But I would add on CDD-1, those first four parcels that would have to be combined to make the minimum requirement, has four curb cuts for four driveways, where I would anticipate, it could be one, and it could be two, I guess, for a bank, but, but more intensive use than the residential home.
And again, just because we're zoned for, doesn't mean that that's what's going to become the use. Right now, we have one project that... Okay. All right, so, I mean, anyone? Comments, thoughts? Should we ask you to have the draft at this 40,000 at the... Yeah, go on, go.
John Casey, 84 Industry. Now, I know what you're doing. You're making the lot smaller and smaller, so Minco, or whatever they call it, can build something there, okay? I mean, five years ago, I said, oh, this is it, two acres, don't worry about it, it's always going to be this, nothing problems. Well, you know, if you're going to keep decreasing the lot size, then I ask that you increase the residential settings to 50 feet from any residential property line. You know, if you're going to decrease the lot size from five acres to one acre, then please increase, so that they're not cramming up to the 30 feet and building in my backyard, increase it to 50 feet to any residential area. A 50-foot setback, whether it's on the side, or the front, or the back, I don't care, but at least 50 feet away from any residential plot line. That way, you're taking care of the residents, who actually are the ones who are here in town, and have been here in town for a long time, and paying their taxes and everything else, and not stepping on them to let commercial come in, just so you can shrink it, so a bank could come in.
Okay.
Now, I see, I see, I see what you're doing, and I don't think it's right. I mean, I know that Salem 5 over on the lot next door would have loved to have a drive-through. Well, they had one in the other building, but, but even Fuddruckers there, or the coffee shop there, they'd love to have a drive-through, but you wouldn't allow it there. So, now, you know, I don't think you're taking apples and apples together. You know, you're giving this area a preference over other areas, and I don't think that's appropriate, dropping it to one acre just to fit what a builder wants to do for their And one other question, are those banks down on 125, where are they, what are they on? Are they in general business, or are they businesses?
I didn't look up the zoning. It was just to get a footprint of a bank with the drive-through and what size lot they were on.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, if they're, see, that's all business down there.
Very likely, very likely, general business.
That's all general business down there, so you expect things like that in general business. But CCD-2 is a budding residential, and, you know, creeping up the street, and anything you put in there, right at that area there, is going to impact the end of Hillside there. And I know the state won't put it in the light, because we've already asked about that. And there was already one person killed, and that's why they closed the other side of Hillside, so you couldn't go across it. But, you know, it's really, really busy there, so I think, you'd think twice about, you know, shrinking to fit a builder's needs, and think about the whole area's needs, the residences' please. Thank you.
All right, so, and at our last meeting, and the meeting before, we had already all kind of talked about and felt that the one acre was an appropriate parcel size, so then the only question that we're really dealing with right now is the frontage, and whether or not going from 250 to 150, which is the same as CDD-1 is appropriate, and basing, looking on the chart, doesn't seem like it will affect anything that I can see. Seems like it would be appropriate if someone could combine the lot sizes to make that happen. So, why don't we at least get a draft with that?
Okay, so, as I scan through this, the draft would include in CCD-1, that allow for banks with a drive-through facility by special permit?
Are we changing CDD-1?
I don't know, is that what you just had?
No, I...
So, CDD-2, what's on the screen now, I thought at the last meeting, you were comfortable with that.
Yes.
And so, my, so my question was, in CDD-1, I had had it highlighted, and that's why we looked at the depth and the...
Oh, I see.
Frontage. So, today, it's no drive-through facilities permitted?
Yeah.
For any of the uses specified offices, including banks, real estate offices, and so on.
So, so, okay, so, say, being an acre and the same depth that they currently have, whether we would allow it by a special permit?
Right.
I mean, as long as it's by special permit, it seems okay. I mean, you're going to have to do a lot to, I don't even think the depth would come in, because you're going to have to do so much to combine the four different things that I, it's probably going to be over one, it's probably going to be over 250 anyway, based on what you have to combine, so, yeah, it seems okay.
So, so, CDD-1 would then look like what's displayed now, which is drive-through banks subject to special permit?
Yeah.
And then, under the special permit provision, banks with drive-through facility within, that would say CDD-1 and CDD-2 district.
Right, yeah.
And then, the only other items discussed were the dimensional requirements.
Mm-hmm.
So, the 250 was just highlighted until we looked at it. The acreage went down to the one acre, and the maximum building coverage in CDD-1 is currently 50. I'm sorry, hold on.
Right, so we're going to make this consistent at 50?
Yeah, so dimensional density...
Maximum building coverage is 50%?
In 1 is currently 40%, but in 2 is 50%. Am I about that right? Yeah, in 2. So, maximum building coverage in 1 is 50%.
Mm-hmm.
And that was with the one acre originally, and so now, 2, you're bringing down to one acre.
Right, we're going to hit it to 50% as well, right?
I suggested making it 50%, the same as the other.
Yeah, that's fine. And making the minimum building frontage 150?
Right.
Yeah. That's fine. And CDD-1, the only one I can see that this would apply to, I mean, there are the three larger lots that are, the large, the 651 Turnpike, which is 44,000 square feet, but it already has over 150 of frontage anyway. I mean, it's 250, it's 160 frontage and 300 depth, so it's already gotten, it's already got enough there anywhere. Okay. That makes sense. Great, anybody else? Okay, so where are we from here on this one?
So, I can draft that. It's going to be included in the legal notice.
Yeah.
Whether you want to carry this again to the next meeting, which is the last meeting prior to...
No, why don't we just schedule it for the public hearing?
Public hearing, that's fine.
Yeah, why don't we schedule them all for the public hearing?
Okay.
Was that March 2nd? Did you say?
March 5th.
March 5th. We'll schedule them all for the March 5th, and then if you have the signs before that, we can talk about signs.
Okay.
Okay, great. So, we will continue, yep, so that will schedule a public hearing on that for March 5th.
And at the public hearings, you're welcome to make those comments as well. That will be actually, it's noticed in the paper, it's not noticed to a butters unless you felt the need to do that. So, the more you spread the word in your neighborhood, the...
Okay, so, when you're changing the whole zoning by a, you don't notify the butters?
Not for a town meeting, more than articles?
Not for a town meeting. It'll be voted on at town meeting. So, we'll have public hearings, I think we'll only have to have one, but we'll have three, and then it'll be voted on. It'll be part of the town meeting booklet, and then be voted on at town meeting. So, if we don't do the notification like you do for a special permit, because we have the whole town meeting process. Okay, so, can...
One quick, really quick question.
Really quick?
Yeah, really quick. Well, I had to sit through a sales pitch here that you guys, which I didn't think was appropriate for the town meeting, but hey, what the heck. What, what got you to even consider dropping this to one acre? I don't understand where this came from. It's just the builder petitioned you for that, and you said, oh my goodness, that's not good.
It's a discussion item. They brought the discussion item about a potential town meeting zoning bylaw, whether or not we would support it, or whether it was something that they would file as a city petition. They brought it before us, just like some of the other zoning bylaws about, that we've dealt with on Turnpike Street, and there was one on Chikering, I think they got withdrawn, so they brought it as a potential zoning article, discussed it, and that's where, that's how it came up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, fair. Can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from...
So, moved.
January 22nd. Moved? Second?
Aye.
Seconded, you seconded?
Aye, seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's approved. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.